Thank you. I'd like to call this Board Education meeting due February the 27th to order, please. And before we get started, I would ask that we all stand. Carl Bruce, a longtime employee of the district and was principal at Northwest Middle, well, middle school now, it's high school, junior high school now, passed last Saturday. His funeral will be Friday at Metropolitan Baptist Church, Ninth and Washington, at 11 o'clock. Reviews from 9 to 11. So I ask that we please stand for a moment of silence. I ask for the clerk to please call the roll.
Carol Brown.
Present.
Maxine Drew.
Present.
Janie Humphries.
Present.
Brenda Jones.
Present.
Wanda Brown-McPage.
Present.
Aldean Nguyen.
Here.
Stacey Egger.
Present.
Thank you. Ask that we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Now, I'll take a motion for the approval of the regular agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion been made and second. Any questions? Very none. Take a vote. All those approved?
Aye.
Motion's been made and approved. Thank you so much. Communications, Dr. Lane.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Good evening, Board. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Find somebody near you and tell them you're glad they're here.
Sharing the pain.
We are very glad to see all of you here today, and in a few moments, we'll have an opportunity to celebrate our Students of the Month and our Employees of the Month. So welcome to all who are here for that purpose, to celebrate our young people and our dedicated employees. We begin each meeting with reminding ourselves of our vision, our goal, and our mission, and Dr. Michelle Colvin will be sharing that with us this evening. Welcome, Dr. Colvin.
Good evening, Board.
Good evening.
Madam President, Dr. Lane.
You're on your own. No, that's not it.
Let me talk about LOV. If you don't mind. All right. Well, I'm here to talk about our vision and our goal and our mission. So as a reminder, the district's vision is to become one of the top 10 school districts in the nation, and the way we do that is by accomplishing our goal, which is for each student to exit high school prepared for college and careers in a global society. And evidence of that goal is through our Diploma Plus endorsements, of which there are seven. And the way we do that every single day is by accomplishing our mission, which is to inspire excellence every grown-up, every child, every day. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. So our young people have been inspiring excellence as you look around this building, which for the next 30 days is renamed the Kansas City Kansas Public Schools Central Office Training Center and Art Gallery. We have the privilege of being surrounded by the talent of our amazing kids inspired by their teachers. So if you haven't had the opportunity, I encourage you to go to the art gallery, look at the walls behind us, and look at all the art around on this floor and also on the second floor. Amazing pieces from our very talented students. So congratulations to our student artists and to their teachers. We also have had some athletes who have been demonstrating excellence. This past weekend, the 5A wrestling tournament was held, and we had three students who finished in the top place. Jonah Andrews from Schlegel High School, fifth place. Let's give him a round of applause. Hyland Wallace, also from Schlegel High School, third place. And I think this one deserves a drum roll of feet. So everybody, drum roll of feet, please. Mr. Mason Turner, first place, grand champion of all schools for wrestling in the state from Schlegel High School. Really proud of our kids. And as we speak, we have the regional basketball tournament starting this evening in various locations around the district. So I encourage everyone to support our young people as they work hard to get to the state competition. We also had a visit today from Commissioner Randy Watson. He is the Commissioner for the Kansas Department of Education. He spent the day at Washington, learning about the work of Diploma Plus at Washington, and sharing with the staff and students what the vision of Kansas can is. So I understand it was a very productive visit and that Dr. Watson was very pleased and encouraging to the staff and students about the work that they're doing. I want to mention that the P3 app is being promoted in the community. If you're not familiar with what that application is, it's a tool that you can download to your smartphone called P3, and it allows students, families, community members to share back to the district anything that they might be aware of that is of concern, a bullying issue or any other issue. I'm bringing that up this evening because in light of the tragedy that happened in Florida, we want to make sure that we have all kinds of tools available so we can keep our children and our community safe. So it's free. It's called P3. I encourage everybody to please download that and use that as you need to. The reports go directly to our Chief of Police here in the school district to be vetted out so we can make sure that we're on top of things. I also wanted to share with the Board that Mrs. Levers is leading the effort of renovation or perhaps replacement of the main branch library. She's formed a committee of community individuals and unified government officials and the mayor to come together to envision a new main, perhaps, either a remodeled main or a newly constructed main. I believe, Mrs. Humphries, you're serving on that committee, and we're very excited to have our partners with Unified Government and the mayor's office sitting at the table and helping us to determine what's best. Board, once they have a framing of some ideas, they'll bring those back to you so you can understand what they recommend for approving that facility. And, Ms. Levers, I'm assuming that you'll talk more to the Board about that in April or later in April when we do our strategic planning?
Certainly.
Great. That's very exciting to have so many partners. So a lot of good things happening in the district, a lot of excitement as we get closer and closer to spring break. Are there any students or staff here that are ready for spring break?
Woo!
Okay. Well, you've earned it. So I think it's coming soon, so you can rest and recover. I might mention at this time that Math Relays is on Saturday. It is an amazing event that happens where about 1,200 of our young people come together on Saturday to compete in mathematics. If you have the opportunity to come by Wyandotte High School, you will be inspired and amazed at the work that our young folks are doing in that area. And then finally, Board, on your Board docs is the report that was requested that articulates the use of the purchasing card for food items. As I had the chance to review the report, you will notice that the expenditures include food for family nights, food for student activities, and food for staff, and some celebrations. So you can see that report articulated for your review. And also, we have a report that was requested on our Human Resource Department. It shows you who's in that department, what positions they have, and a brief description of their certifications. So those are my communications.
Thank you, Dr. Lane. Well, it's been such a hectic week since the last time, but today I went to, very excited to see our middle school, Central Middle School. We had all the, middle schools had a band festival. It was outstanding. I couldn't stay for the full thing, but I had to leave. And then I went over to K-State, had a luncheon for leaders dealing with education and various things, and it was quite well-attended. So it's, and then I came to this wonderful art show. Every time we have this art show, I'm always amazed at what, as I call them, my babies are doing and capable of doing at such a young age, from kindergarten to the 12th grade. And it's truly amazing and very inspiring. So I hope you all, please, if you don't get to tonight, it will be hanging. But you need to get some of them tonight because some of them after this will go out into the communities. So please, take time to look at their work. Any other Board members have any reports?
I do.
Okay.
I was there this morning for the whole thing. Our bands have gotten so much more advanced than last year. It is amazing. And then last night was New Chelsea's Black History Program, and the kids and the staff just put on a beautiful thing. Dr. Strickland and Dr. Lane were there with me. And then Friday was the Sumner and Schlegel Basketball Game, girls and boys. And that was very, very exciting, even for someone who's not a sports person.
It was a good game, wasn't it?
It was a very good game. And Mr. Brown joined us this morning at Central to enjoy our bands. It was, it was a very, very nice way to start off the day.
Anybody else?
Sure.
Thank you, Madam President. When Commissioner Watson was here, what was he here, a month ago?
Mm-hmm.
At that point, we were, I announced that there will be a culturally relevant pedagogy seminar at Washburn this summer. It's, and I have, I have the brochures and peace placid forward. Since you're in academia, you know pedagogy is essentially teaching teachers. So you also know that one of the components of the Gannon decision mentioned there were maybe 25% of students not achieving. One suggestion that the, this for you, that the Kansas State Board of Education and the Kansas State Department of Education promote, let's say suggested that Representative Ackla and myself create an opportunity for teachers to, and the term is like, fill up their toolbox. And so this is an intensive four-week seminar, free, $50 deposit, for full-time middle school and high school students in all, teachers, excuse me, in all disciplines, and that they are immersed in Native American, Latin American, African American, and Asian American culture and ways to teach. The capstone is a week in Washington, visiting the new Smithsonian, the new Native American, new African American Museum. And so it is on the web, and I would hope that we would encourage, I grabbed the curriculum guy in the elevator. Where is he? There he is. Right. And so I would hope, it, it's only 14, seven middle school, seven high school, and that I would hope that at least a few from 500 would apply. It's a competitive exercise, and it, it is, it will be a rewarding opportunity. These teachers then become the facilitators for professional development, and their curriculum units must emerge, immerse the cultural aspect. It's not a standalone curriculum. And so just wanted to encourage our teachers and let you see that it's up and running. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Anyone else?
For the past month, I've been working with Burton Carruthers Elementary School, and we're working on a career fair, which is scheduled to begin April 13th. So if anybody has an opportunity to come by and visit, or if you own your own business and you'd like to come and volunteer, we would truly appreciate it. Also got a chance to work with the Saturday Academy, and it's an awesome experience. And I would suggest if you have young people who are eligible, that they apply because they have a lot of hands-on learning, and that's what our kids need. And this will help them further their academic skills and also in the workforce have some opportunities because they're really working hard to help our kids, and it's designed for our kids. So please, check into it.
Okay. Any others? Thank you. Community listening sessions. Is she going to come forward?
Yes. Ms. Fears, Ms. Bedford Fears, will come up and talk to you a little bit about the work she's doing to help prepare for your community listening session. Welcome, Ms. Fears.
Good afternoon, Board.
Good afternoon.
As you know, on Saturday, you all met, and you talked about the listening tours that you're going to have, and you decided that you were going to have four of those. And you charged me with a few tasks, and I know my deadline is Friday, but no time like the present to start working and get underway with it. So I wanted to pass out to you some information. It is, thanks, Grace. It is a draft of the news release, and then you also asked about the different methods of communication that I would use to get the information out. So I wanted you to see that as well, and for you to give me feedback on these items, at least by the end of the meeting, to put a check mark by anything that you are, you're fine with, or mark through it if you're not okay with it, some of these areas, and if you have additions to it. What I will say is that it'll talk about the print media that I generally use. It's just giving the names of those different print publications. Of course, I do target certain reporters at those publications, too. Social media, that would be, of course, used before, during, and after the event. So Facebook, Twitter, YouTube, special shows that we have on our Kansas City Kansas Public Schools television channel, radio, KPRS, KCUR, KMBZ, also working to get you on one of the shows on KPRS, Three Hot Minutes in the Community segment, that sort of thing, for an interview to get folks in the door. The television station, all the major networks, and of course, including, including our television station here, which would be Channel 18 and Channel 145. Partners, of course, you being the Board of Education is our primary partner with the school district for you to use it on your social media sites if you have them. Also, the Heartland Black Chamber of Commerce, reaching out to the Kansas City Kansas Chamber of Commerce, the Unified Government, the Hispanic Chamber, the library system, PTA and churches to also spread the word to the folks that come through the door. Word of mouth will also be very important to this as well. And then internal communications with staff. So we would make sure that our staff knows about this information, too, and that it is prominent within their schools. I do have a first draft of this, of the flyer, and it's just a first draft. We're still working on it. I know my deadline is Friday, but I'll pass that around for you all to see. And if there's anything on there that jumps out at you that maybe we shouldn't have on there, let me know about it. I'm happy to make that change.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Fears. So I heard you say you'd like the feedback by the end of the meeting.
Yes, if at all possible. Just mark through something. If it doesn't work for you, mark through it. If you have other suggestions, please just add it to that, and I'll get it at the end of the meeting. I'll be able to make those changes and get it back to you. My goal is to start disseminating the information by this Thursday so we can strategically get the items out the door, so we can get the bodies in the seats and the folks online.
That's terrific. So we had the opportunity tonight to connect Ms. Rachel Henderson. Ms. Henderson, are you still with us? Would you mind standing? Rachel's the president of the PTA Council, so.
I love that you're on black, so I would like to just.
We are excited that you're here. So she's now met Mr. Greg Gohean, so the co-facilitation, they can plan that for you, Board. So thank you, Ms. Henderson. Thank you, Ms. Fears.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Now we're going for the Student of the Month, and Ms. Janie Humphries will be presenting, and Dr. Nguyen will be doing the reading. Other babies.
Tall on the short of it.
Good evening. While they are getting the mics ready, James Ong, Pre-K, North Central Office Early Childhood Center. Would you come forward?
Oh, right. Mr. James is ready. Look at him, sweet. Cute as he can be. You can get through little spaces. You don't need that. You said I could do it.
James was nominated by Heather Trinkle Miller, early childhood teacher. She writes, "James is a caring, respectful, and responsible student. He is a model for the rest of the children in his class. Since the beginning of the year, James has opened up to his classmates and teachers. We are so fortunate to have James in our classroom. Sincerely, Heather Trinkle Miller, early childhood teacher." Heather, are you here? Come on up. Come on.
She acted like she was scared.
James's family has endured some challenges since the beginning of the year, and he has, he has come through the class with flying colors. We always enjoy his smile when he comes into class. And like I said before, he's very respectful and just always makes good choices, and he sets a great example for all of the other children in the class. So congratulations, James.
Woo!
Mommy.
Did some of your teachers come? And your principal? Oh, there they are, back there, standing. About if everyone who came with James stands up? Thank you, James. Our next student, third grader, Chad Taylor. Chad goes to New Stanley Elementary School, nominated by teachers Teresa Berry, Jenny Nolan. They write, "Chad has been a positive role model for other students in our classroom. As a student who is always at school, Chad is a good friend and always willing to help out others at school. Chad is a student who perseveres. He never gives up, always trying hard to reach his goal. Sincerely, Teresa Berry, Jenny Nolan, Teachers, New Stanley."
So we wrote this last year when we had Chad in second grade. We've had the pleasure of having Chad in kindergarten and second grade, but we gave him up this year and let him move on to third grade, and we went and did different things. But Chad's current teacher, Ms. Abby Yem, sent me an email because she was not able to make it tonight. But she said, "Chad is a kind, energetic, and a lot of fun to have in class. He is a sensitive kid and a caring friend to many. Chad seems to learn best by moving around and participating in hands-on activities. He continues to improve and mature and gain confidence in his skills. Chad makes me smile so much, and I can truly say he has a heart of gold." And that was from his current teacher. As a past teacher of Chad and a lot of his family members, Chad's family is very dedicated to the Kansas City Kansas community, in particular Argentine. He's got a lot of family here tonight that I've had a few of them actually as my own students. We won't get into that. But at any rate, the family is very cemented in Argentine and Kansas City, Kansas. He has an uncle who is a police officer. His great-grandma used to work in the kitchen at New Stanley. His late-great-aunt worked as an ESL instructor at New Stanley. So they're very dedicated to our school, and we sure appreciate it, and we love it when they show up, and we love Chad's dedication and his, just his playful spirit. So now I'll let Ms. Jenny Nolan speak.
Yeah. So I've also not only had the pleasure of working with Chad in the classroom for two years, but I've also had the pleasure of being his basketball coach the last two years. And he's improved so much. In fact, this last Saturday, he was definitely the MVP, scoring 14 baskets in the game.
All right.
So I know I will be hearing about him the further along he goes in school and being one of those star athletes. I'm very, very proud of everything he does. Even though he's out there to win the game for sure, he definitely has a heart. Anytime he sees another player on our team or even the other team that falls down, he's the first one over there to help him up. He's just, he's got a heart of gold. He's a great kid. I love getting to work with him in class and in basketball.
Awesome. We want to see him play for the Jayhawks, just saying.
So what is your favorite? Which gun?
Goosebumps.
Goosebumps. Those are very popular around third and fourth grade. So who did you bring with you tonight?
Um, my mom, my dad, and my sister.
Your sister?
And my teachers, and my grandma, and my grandpa.
Okay, let's have everybody stand up.
Your principal.
Looks like somebody brought you balloons. Are those your two favorite colors?
Jayhawk colors.
So you think you want to go to Jayhawk and play basketball?
Yeah.
What's your favorite pastime, is playing basketball?
What's your favorite pastime, is playing basketball? What do you think you want to be like when you get out of college? You haven't thought about that yet? You've got lots of time to think about it. Lots of time to explore different things at school. You know what that says?
Chad Taylor.
Says Chad Taylor, Student of the Month for February 2018. It's presented to you by the Board of Education. And do you have school tomorrow?
Yeah.
Wear this to school tomorrow. Show everyone how special you are. Continue being that good citizen and citizen you are. Be nice to everyone and helping everyone. It's very important. We're very proud of you. Thank you.
Great job, Chad. Our next student, sixth grader from Central Middle School, Viviana Mesias. Viviana, you here? Her teacher, Catherine Baldas, writes, "Viviana is an excellent student. She is constantly trying her best with everything she does. She is kind to everyone, helping translate if a student doesn't understand, and lending supplies to students in need. Viviana is a natural choice for Student of the Month. Sincerely, Catherine Baldas, Teacher, Central Middle School." Bear Cubs.
Well, good evening, Madam President, Board members. Dr. Lane, it's a pleasure to see you this evening. I'm JP Hornback, the new principal at Central Middle. And in my short time at Central, Viviana has been one of the young ladies who has shown me that smile every day, greeted me with a "Good morning, miss", and has been so kind and welcoming. And she really is the embodiment of the character that we want all of our Bear Cubs to display. Her teacher, Ms. Baldas, was unable to be with us tonight, but her advocate is here and wants to share just a little bit about her experience in the classroom of the last, bless you, over the last couple of years with Viviana. We are so proud of you, darling. And keep up the good work. Thank you. So proud.
Yeah, I'm Viviana's family advocate as well as her science teacher. And she gives me the most incredible work. She goes above and beyond on all of her assignments. And beyond that, she really looks out for her peers and classmates. She, a couple of times, I know it was hard for her, but like stood up to bullies and reported that to adults when she needed to. And she's just, I'm so proud of her. She's a great student.
Yeah, and math class.
And math?
Awesome.
And what's in you to read?
Yes.
What kind of books?
Well, my favorite book right now is Wonder. It's a boy who had a problem with his face. He gets picked on a lot, but he fights Durant. At the end, he has a lot of friends, and he's happy.
You like to read? You like to help people? Do you play sports?
No, not right now.
Do you play a musical instrument?
No.
Do you like to help other people a lot?
Yes.
That's what you like to do. So what do you think you might want to do when you get out of high school and out of college?
I want to be an engineer.
All right.
Is there someone special who's inspiring you to be an engineer?
Yes, my sister.
Oh, wow.
And who would you bring with you tonight?
My sister.
And staff from Central? This is your medal. You have earned it.
Thank you.
It says, "Viviana is a Student of the Month for Kansas City, Kansas Public Schools, February 2018. And would you like to join us to school tomorrow?"
I sure will.
It's beautiful. Thank you, Viviana. Our last student, excuse me, Roderick Montgomery, senior, Washington High School. Nominated by Gabe Murvash Administrator, Elizabeth Alt, Kristen Werpe, teachers from Washington. They write, "Since arriving at Washington, Roderick has made a positive impact on the entire school community, but particularly the freshman academy. As a senior, his life and school experiences have been useful tools for him to share with our freshmen. He is a wonderful, positive person for our freshmen to have as a resource. We know that Roderick will be an asset to wherever he decides to go to college and will have a lasting impact on our freshmen. Sincerely."
So Roderick and I have only met a couple of times. And every single time I meet him, he's very polite and courteous. And then I start to hear what other teachers have to say about him. And I said, "Why aren't we nominating this kid for Student of the Month?" And so I sat down, and I took people's words, and I learned about Roderick, and I nominated him. And I was so happy to hear that you nominated, and I cannot wait to hear and see what you're doing after high school.
Good evening, Board. I have had the pleasure of working with Roderick pretty much all year. He's one of our students that takes a lot of college classes. So he has places in his schedule where he has time where he can come and do other things for people around the building. And at the beginning of the year, he kind of just chose me. And I'm better for it. So, he's come into our recovery room, which has turned into my office, for some of our students that have been out for one reason or another. And for the days that he's in there, he tutors students. He works with some of our more challenging young people and, you know, has befriended them, and they trust him, and has just really been a mentor for so many of our students that need one. And he's just such a pleasure to watch work. He has so much patience for students that are behind academically. And, you know, we've talked, at the beginning of all this, we talked about him wanting to go into education possibly and then become a principal. So he's even gone with me on evaluations or walkthroughs, not evaluation, but walkthroughs for teachers just to kind of see what we're looking for and what we do and what good teaching looks like. And he's just interested in that sort of stuff. You know, he also said other things that he would like to go into in college, and that would be fine, too. However, if he ever comes back as a teacher, you better find me first, okay? I will hire you that day, okay? So, Roderick, congratulations. You absolutely have earned this.
Thank you both. Thank you both for that. Let me get my doctorate first. Maybe, maybe. Give it like eight years, maybe. My mother, she's over there right now. Without her shaping me into the young man I am today, I would not be standing up here at this moment, so. Yes, of course. You know, it just really depends on the day. I like to read magazines, you know, research on the internet. You know, whatever teenagers like to do, I do, you know, so. You'll find me doing a lot of different things on different days, so you never know. Yes, I graduated May 18th. I will try to make that arrangement. I'll be here, I'll be here, I'll be here. Well, that's still being decided at this moment, but we're looking at probably Avila University for right now, so. Yes, ma'am. All right, thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Roderick. That concludes our Student of the Month. Thank you so much. Now it's time for the Employee of the Month recognition. Ms. Wanda Brownlee Page will be presenting, and Maxine Drew will be doing the reading.
Our first recipient is Ms. Houston, who is... Employee of the Month, SLCT teacher from Lindbergh Elementary School. Ms. Houston is a true asset to our building. She works with students of all ages and abilities. Ms. Houston is always willing to help where she is needed. Ms. Houston also works to build strong homeschool connections. She contacts families through various forms of communication and is willing to do what needs to be done so our families know about their child. Ms. Houston makes our building a better place. We are lucky she's a part of our staff. Sincerely, Sarah Cole, Lindbergh Elementary School.
This is for Ms. Houston. Isn't she lovely? Isn't she wonderful? We are so happy that you work for us. But guess what? I don't know the rest of the song, but we just want you to know that you're awesome. On behalf of the Board, we want to thank her. And believe me, everyone who works for our district deserves an award. We have some hard-working people who care, who give their all, and it's just sad we can't give you more. And I know God is going to bless you because just from hearing from your staff, they appreciate you, they love you. And if I was Oprah, I'd say, "You got a car, and you got a car." But I can't give you a car. But we can say thank you, and God bless you.
Well, I just wanted to say, Dr. Colgan... Oh, can I pull it down? I'm sorry. Okay. Dr. Colgan mentioned last month that we hadn't had any Employees of the Month from Lindbergh. And when Dr. Colgan tells me to jump, I say, "How high?" And so the only person that I could think of in our building was Ms. Houston. Not the only person, but the first person that came to mind was Ms. Houston, definitely. She's an amazing asset to our building and our district. Thank you.
Well, about five years ago, I decided that for the third time I was going to get back into teaching. So I did some subbing, and I thought, "I really like that KCK district." And they were nice enough to give me an interview. And then I was just lucky enough to land at Lindbergh, where a small welcoming staff made me feel welcome, put me to work right away, and let me be part of the team, even though I was just a little bit older than most of them. So I really appreciate being at Lindbergh, and I love being part of the KCK district. Thank you.
No, no, come back, come back.
See, you're just, you're so awesome.
Our next person is Mr. David Gray, Head Custodian, John Fisk Elementary School. Mr. Gray is not only the head custodian of John Fisk Elementary School, he is a role model, a leader, and an advocate. David is always going above and beyond for staff, students, and families in our community. David Gray is not only an asset to John Fisk, he is a crucial component of what makes our school and community such a fun, caring place to work and live. We appreciate him so much and want him to be recognized for all that he does. Sincerely, Megan Maja Theresa Todd, John Fisk Elementary.
Well, he has fun.
I'm, we made this slideshow. I snuck some pictures. Some of them are old. I kind of, this one's out my classroom door. He didn't know I saw him. He was working with this child on tying his shoes. And in what we wrote, I said that he is just such an asset to our school. I've had children in my class who have attendance issues, and he comes in and rewards them. He starts his own system. He had a student one year who missed at least twice a week. And when he started coming in and checking on him every morning, he never missed again. And we all got a pizza party. It was pretty exciting. But yeah, he's wonderful. My kids look up to him. If a child can't pay for a field trip, he'll pay for it. He's provided clothing and shoes for my students. He's just, I could go on and on. He's wonderful. Go, Ms. Todd.
I've known Mr. Gray for many, many years. And he does, you name it, he does it for you. A teacher will ask for something, and before you can turn around, you've got it. Like she said, he's there for everyone, not just the staff or the kids. He makes sure that they have something to eat. If there's leftovers, he'll come around and say, "Who hasn't had breakfast? You need breakfast." And he's bought kids clothes that needed it, shoes, paid for field trips. He's just an amazing person, and we are so, so fortunate to have him at John Fisk.
Mr. Gray, I had a song for the young lady, and we have one for you. You're simply the best, better than all the rest. And if the temptations were here, they would just say, "What can make me feel this way? Mr. Gray, Mr. Gray, Mr. Gray, talking about Mr. Gray, Gray Gray." As I said before, we have awesome people who work for this district. If I didn't know any better, I would have thought they were talking about Jesus. No, no, I'm serious. This man is feeding. He's buying tickets. He's giving this, he's doing that. And you don't find that. And this young man is doing a lot because he believes in our school. He believes in our kids. And I tell you, I almost wanted to say, "What's your number? Can I call you?" No, I'm just teasing. I'm teasing. I'm teasing. I'm teasing. I'm teasing. Okay, I'm sorry. I got you, baby. I got you. You got to be able to laugh, and I feel you. And I wouldn't let him go either. That's a good thing. But he's an awesome young man. And I know you are... God bless you. But on the serious side, he's an awesome man. And he's a family man. He's here for our kids, and we just want to keep encouraging him to do the right thing. Because this is what our young men need to see. And the young ladies need to see it as well. Because this is what you need to look for. Someone who has a heart, someone who has an awesome spirit. Someone who has a heart, someone who has an awesome spirit, and someone who works hard, and that's what you want. And we just thank you, we couldn't pay you enough, but one day, we're going to get you that car. So God bless you.
Well, I just want to say thanks. Todd, Mahia, you guys are the best. My whole staff, I love everybody. I have a really special guest that just showed up and just blew my mind today. Ms. Kay, will you please stand? This was my librarian for years, she retired a couple of years ago, and I get, they surprised me with her. I love Ms. Kay to death. I mean, you know, she's just been so good to me. Ms. Bigby, please stand. We go do lunch together every once in a while. I'm telling on myself, wife, I'm sorry. Would the rest of the staff from John Fisk please stand? We have the greatest principal in the world, he's new, Dr. Graham. And there's only one other thing I'd like to say, and this is to Dr. Mathers. I work real hard, and there's one thing I ask, two. Mr. Smith, you'll be proud of this. Ms. Van Oostdoop, I would like an art room for him and a music room for her. Thank you.
That's just awesome. Before we break and go out to greet everybody, I'd like to recognize, we have in the room Commissioner Melissa Bynum and our Farmer Mayor Carol Marinovich, would you please stand? And we would take about five minutes to go out and greet the students and employees, and then we'll come back in. Thank you.
They took the kids away, we couldn't greet them all. The parents took them out of here. Why does it do this? It drives me crazy.
The proposal's red on Saturday.
It does that, I don't know why. It drives me crazy, it keeps dropping us on this thing. Also, it's just not us, huh?
Yes, I got them all confirmed.
Thank you so much, as we continue on, we're now at the point of our community comment, and we have someone here, Dr. Dolores Pinker.
Thank you, Madam President. Am I being heard?
Yes.
Yes. Yes, with me is, I am Dr. Dolores Pinker, and with me is Betty Maddox, and we are community advocates. And we are really here tonight because we couldn't wait any longer to express to Dr. Cynthia Lane our great, great appreciation for the superintendent that she has been for this district. I don't have prepared remarks, but I need to say that from a personal perspective, I watched Dr. Lane from the first day that she came into this district. And what I saw was a teacher without any rival toward excellence. What I have seen her do as a superintendent just solidified her love for this district and these children. We know that it has not been easy, Dr. Lane, and we do know that you have had to put yourself in positions of advocacy for this district as in opposition to state funding for education, for example. We thank you for having the backbone, the intelligence, the maturity, and the love for these children in this district, that you have been willing to stand up for us, for all of us throughout your tenure here. I want to also, and so I'm here to say thank you, I'll just say that. Thank you, we cannot express it any deeper, there are no words that can express how much we appreciate you, not just for what you've done, but for who you are. Thank you. I want to also address this new Board of Education, and you are new because you are for the first time working together as a team. We know you did not run as a slate, we didn't vote you in as a slate, but now we know that you are ready to move into working as a team. We, as a community, our children, we need that. We need to keep the confidence of this community in what our Board of Education is doing in decision-making for our children. I'm a product of Kansas City, Kansas Public Schools, my children are also. I have been very proud of this school district, and I know, because you are sitting here and this job doesn't quite pay the salary that you might want, that you are here because you care about our children. So let's always keep first and foremost what is good for the children in this district and for this community. Thank you, Dr. Lane.
I don't have a lot to say, because everything that my friend Dolores has said has already been said. I am a product, and in fact, Dolores and I go way back. We started out at Dumbore, and we're still in the, still with the Sumner Alumni now. We're both officials with the Sumner Alumni Association, and we are quite involved in the community, and you will be seeing our face. And I can't say, "I love you, Dr. Lane." You have been everywhere. A lot of superintendents have not gone to the places that you have gone to, you showed up at different affairs. Hopefully, the new board, I'll see some of your faces, because I'll be there, and hopefully you will follow in some of the footsteps and the guidelines that she has set so far, because she's done an excellent job, and I can't say anymore outside of, "Job well done."
I apologize for coming back again. I want to also say to the board, as you are beginning to search for someone who will come in behind Dr. Lane, we want to find somebody that we could almost say replaces her. That's going to be difficult, maybe impossible, but I am offering my help, if you need people to help screen applicants or whatever, that was my work, then please call on me. If there are others in the community that you want to know who has an interest and an expertise in an area that you need, please call on me. We are more than willing to come forth and help. Thank you.
Wow, thank you. Next, we have Pat Bruni, who would like to come up, please.
Good evening, President Jones, Board Directors, Dr. Lane. You know, you're having a bad day when you follow Dr. Dolores Pinker. I have friends and family with me, my name's Pat Bruni, I'm a lifetime resident taxpayer in Wyandotte County, product of USD 500. I'll apologize to my family, they heard the speech Sunday. I did carve down my 30 minutes of eloquent oratory. I'm going to read to you a little bit, I had to get it carved in a little bit. So here we go. Start with some family history. My grandfather begins, began school at White Church in 1905, before the current school was even built, and four generations of us attended that school. My mom attended Welburn in the little white building that predates the current building there. 2017 marked the graduation of the last family member from Sumner Academy of Arts and Science, where three family members were valedictorians for their class. We have four honorees in the district's Reason to Believe program, Melissa Bynum for community work, me for my career, Dad for his volunteering work for 13 years at White Church, and Mom for being the oldest elected a PTA official when she was a grandmother, and producing this yearbook for White Church Elementary in 2005. Dad also worked with Dr. O.L. Plucker, a name some might remember, when the Washington Rural District merged with USD 500. And a little side note, if I may, Dr. Winn? I have to do it, but it's true for both of us. Over a half century ago
You and I were in the girls' sports club.
Yeah, well, and we played in the final Powder Puff football game at Washington High School.
You had to bring that one up.
And it was, it was the final one, because she got injured. And I have a blurred memory of visiting her at her home during rehabilitation, and I am pleased to see that the family home at 87th and Georgia is still in your name today, just like my family home at 81st and Cleveland is still in mine. We have deep roots in this community. We were not a wealthy family, by today's standards, we were probably poor. It was not until I was an adult that I realized the reason Dad told us he didn't need a coat in the winter was because he couldn't afford to buy one for us and then for himself as well. Everything we have, everything our family has, and most of who we have become, although the church gets some credit, is due to USD 500 and the education it provided. I mentioned my career, I worked 31 years in the federal court system in the Western District of Missouri, starting in the lowest-paying job they had, ending in the highest. I was the clerk of court, which is in the private sector like a CEO. I had 18 federal judges as my board of directors. We had courthouses in five cities across the western half of the state of Missouri. I got to be involved in the design of three of those buildings and the construction of two of them, working with J.E. Dunn to meet all of the requirements of federal courthouse construction, as well as all the commitment to contracting with diverse businesses to get the job done, and J.E. Dunn handled it well. I talk about my work with the court as an introduction to a possible cautionary tale. My career included the multiple years of litigation involving the Kansas City, Missouri School District. The case, a case that made multiple trips to the Supreme Court due to the unique nature of the remedy dictated by the court. During many of those meetings and court dates around that case, it became clear that the problem was not entirely about the remedy proposed. Years of mismanagement had eroded the trust of the public in the school district. Years of mismanagement had eroded the trust of the public in the school district, so much so that no bond issue could get passed. And the problem persisted even after the court stepped in with proposed solutions. Judges privately expressing concern that they were not speaking to the right people when they spoke to the school board members. In the background, issues had become political, with jobs at the administration being assigned to allies rather than to qualified personnel. That school district is still not fully accredited. Flip to USD 500 with me. Our bond issue passed with 23,699 yes votes, probably more than any one individual board member. The efforts of the district to involve community members paid dividends demonstrated by a 79% approving vote. We are better together. We must listen and understand and work to keep the positive support of the community in mind as we do what is best for the kids. I know there are many families today just like mine in USD 500, poor folk searching for a good education. I also know they no longer look like me, with 50% of the student population being Hispanic and over 70 different languages being spoken. But our, yours, and my responsibility to them is still the same it was to the Bruni family, beginning in 1905. Provide safe, secure places to learn and to learn how to achieve in this modern world. And now, Dr. Lane, my mom and dad would be sorely disappointed in me if I didn't take this opportunity to say a public thank you for all you have done for this district. I know you started as a special education teacher with your friend Carol Marinovich, who's here this evening. I don't know what was in the water at that school, but we should bottle it and use it to teach others how to lead in good times and bad. Your many awards have been and will be listed in other areas. I won't do that now. It's your heart and your spirit that will continue after your retirement in those of us who have had the pleasure of working with you over the years. My 88-year-old mom said to tell you, "You're the most forward-thinking, progressive superintendent we've ever had," and she remembers back to a lot of previous people in your position. And if you know my mom, you know she said it just like that. And then she named a previous superintendent. I'm not going to do that. My dad was always amazed when he attended anything where you were present, including the "Are You Faster Than a Fifth Grader" races. He would shake his head and say, "She always knows my name, even in public." It meant something to him that you recognized him and spoke with him regardless of time or place. It has meant something to all of us. We will all remember, and we all thank you.
Are you okay?
I will be. Thank you for your kindness, your kind words. This community is strong, and our children will benefit from your efforts. So thank you all very much. I think now, Ms. Jones, you're ready for your legislative update. So David, don't, please don't bring the mood down too low.
Well, good evening, Board.
Good evening.
I would like to begin by pointing out that you know it's a bad day when you have to follow either Dolores or Pat Bruni. So that being as it is, I have a slide deck. I told you that Lori Taylor, and actually Jason Willis as well, who are researchers doing the study for the legislature for the school finance, which is due on the 15th, would be presenting last week. On Friday, they presented to a joint House Education, Senate Education Committee, and on Saturday, two practitioners at KASB. They have a 65-page slide deck. Dr. Lane asked me to go through the whole thing. I told her I would cut it off. But I did want to share a few things with you. I can't say it was much different than what we expected, except she did begin the presentation with about 15 minutes where she defended herself against things that other people had said about her, which was just odd, let's just say. It was odd because normally you let your work speak for itself, but she felt the need to defend herself. She did a study in Texas previously on school finance, and there had been two other estimates, one about $400 million, one about $600 million. Her study said that they only needed about $800,000 additional money. So the judge in that case wasn't particularly kind to her, so she had felt like she had to defend herself. She did that, and then they went through a whole series of slides talking about their methodology, and much of it was, as you might expect, in researcher language and fairly technical and complex. There were a couple of things that I noticed. They were very open. They took a lot of questions, both on Friday and on Saturday. One of the things that Dr. Taylor said repeatedly was, and this is her speaking, "I'm a data hound. I love data. So if you have more data, give me the data. I just love data." What was interesting, though, and she said that, when people in their questions asked how she would take various things into account, particularly the challenges associated with English-language learners, the challenges associated with districts like ours and students that we serve. And she always said, "Oh, if you have a statewide dataset that you can give me, I'd love to have it." It occurred to me about halfway through listening to her repeated, with that answer repeatedly, that she's a researcher. She knows exactly what datasets exist that would fit her criteria, which means it has to be statewide, it has to be longitudinal, longitudinal over 10 years, and it has to be something that obviously she can access electronically. She knows exactly what datasets exist. So although it came across as very open, no one had any additional datasets to give her. So that was a little, after I realized that, it was, hmm. Just made me say, hmm. So she talked a lot, and this is all going to happen very quickly. She had asked for additional information by yesterday, and then they were going to start running their data, and it is due to the legislature on the 15th. And then they will react. Obviously, we have concerns about what will come out. The good news is that there are a lot of other people paying attention, other researchers who have access to the same information and data, who will also be running with slightly different models than what she used. So I think we have some confidence that after the Supreme Court has said on numerous occasions that schools are not being funded adequately, if she comes back and says to the legislature, "You're funding enough. You're giving schools enough," that the court will be able to see through that. And even though the legislature views this study as a way to show their work, I think all of us who are educators know that it doesn't matter if you show your work if your work is wrong. So that's our hope in this, in the end, is that the court will understand that while they worked hard, the work does not accurately portray the needs here in Kansas. So the date is March 15th. There are, they started, turnaround was last week, so no more bills can be, well, actually, shouldn't say no more. Most of the bills, if they haven't left the house of origin, then they're done, but there are a few that are being talked about. There'll be some hearings this week that we'll go to. But most of our energy is targeted towards March 15th and then that really quick period after that when they're going to have to get something done. So that's what it is, and I would love any questions that you all have.
How long will it take after the 15th?
They, the regular session is slated to end on April 6th. They could extend it, so that's a possibility. But remember, the court has said you must get to us all of your briefs by April 30th, which is the day that the wrap-up session is supposed to begin. The Attorney General, a month ago, said, "I really need everything by March 1st." They're clearly going to blow past that deadline, but they're going to have to get something done in early April just to give the state enough time to actually make their case. One of the challenges the state said they faced last time was they didn't, the lawyers didn't have the information in enough time to actually build their case. So I would think the first, second week of April, something will be done. But I don't expect it to be adequate, and I expect us to be back at it in June.
Mr. Smith, you want to add the deficiencies in the report, in the study, as to factors that are not important, like transportation, like food?
They, one of the things they did was they said, "We're going to include all costs except," and then they listed some things that they were not going to include, and among those were transportation, food service, which were huge costs for us. And what they said was that they were not including those specific costs because those didn't directly impact on academics. Now...
Kill the messenger.
Obviously, we understand that if you can't get a child to school, you can't teach that child. And if that child comes to school hungry and leaves school hungry, they're not going to be focused on learning. So we get that, and we also understand, and I spent some time explaining to her colleague that districts like ours have additional costs related to transportation because we need to, to support our kids and our community. And simply looking at one standard for transportation and assuming that's equal for all districts doesn't get at the reality of our district and many others like ours. So they heard it. Whether they attend to it, we'll see.
And one last comment. The front page of the CAP journal on Friday had the comments by the district judge that she was not credible. So she had to defend herself straight out of the box.
I guess. I guess.
She did.
Other questions? Well, thank you.
Looney's running around here.
We'll be back. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have asked Dr. Mather to come and give us a board, a bond update.
Board update.
Madam President, Board Members, Dr. Lane, good evening.
Evening.
In your board docs, I wanted to kind of continue the theme of not wanting to follow somebody, but David...
But I blew it. So now you, now you got it, right? This is easy.
You just gave me nothing. In your board docs, you have the monthly bond update. I just wanted to say a couple of words about this update. I'm going to continue to put this update in your board docs each and every month. The top part of that update is simply the schedule. If you remember, I just put it up there so you could see all the work packages, and that's just for your reference. I don't need to review it. We will review the bond expenditures by month. That will stay on there. To date, it's, for the last preceding month, is about just over $1.2 million. And then the bottom section is the most important section, which is really the highlights. We're trying some different things tonight. I've asked Mr. Stubble, Mark Stubble, who's the Assistant Director of Facilities, to join me to do a little bit different presentation with the highlights because we're now starting to enter into where the work is really starting to happen. So he gets the pleasure of pictures and a couple of highlights of what's happening in some of the major construction processes. But I wanted to also share with the bond expenditures, you are going to start noticing increased expenditures as we now move forward. Over the next nine, 10 months, you're going to start seeing much higher levels of expenditures by month. As you know, we have put out over $75 million. We bid out over $75 million of the work. All of that work is starting to start as we speak right now. So this form, because it's so easily read on the TV, I've decided we will just put that on your board docs. But if we could just go to the page two real quick, I wanted to do a couple of highlights, and then I'll turn it over to a different form. On the highlights that are listed for you all, the first thing I just wanted to overview is the groundbreaking ceremonies that we're going to be having. And I have a correction now because of the unfortunate passing of Mr. Carl Bruce. We are changing the March 2nd groundbreaking for Gloria Willis Middle School, Claude Hike, and Stony Point North to March 5th?
8th.
8th, thank you. Thursday. I know it's Thursday. Thank you, Susan. To March 8th at the respective same time. So Gloria Willis Middle School groundbreaking, if you drive by there, you're going to start seeing some construction. I'm not going to steal Mark's thunder, but that will be at 10 o'clock on March 8th. And Claude Hike at approximately 10:45, and Stony Point North at approximately 11:30. We are going to have a bus here at Central Office, and we will all, if the board so chooses, anybody else would like to join us can certainly go over to the groundbreaking ceremonies for that. So it's exciting that that work is starting to happen at all those sites. Mark will give you some highlights on that. Just a quick update as well. March 23rd, we have scheduled the Welburn Elementary School groundbreaking at 10 o'clock, same situation. We'll take folks over, or we can meet, we can make arrangements as we get closer to that date. And right now, tentatively scheduled for Grant Elementary's addition and renovations groundbreaking on April 16th. So I wanted to give you a highlight of some of those things. Also, as I start to turn this over to Mark, John, if you can just pull up the other sheets, and I'll talk for a minute as you get those. We're working on a report so that the community and the board are aware in a very succinct way of where we're at on all these projects. I think it'll be easier read than what I've given you in this monthly report, but I'll continue to update this monthly report for you as well. But with the support of J.E. Dunn and Mark and his team and all the folks we get to work with on a regular basis, they're helping us put together kind of a one-page update of what's happening at a particular school where there's construction happening. That's what we're going to share with you today. So with that, I want to turn that over to Mark, and he can give you a couple of highlights.
Good evening, Board.
Good evening.
So we're looking at the highlights for Wyandotte High School. Wyandotte's definitely underway. A lot of the exterior work is underway. I just, I just want to say I'm so excited to actually be building something instead of talking about building something. It's good to get mud on my boots. But we're well underway at Wyandotte. We're probably 20% done with the exterior plumbing work, the sewer lines and so forth. The plumbers have been working down in the tunnels in Wyandotte, and they've got a lot done down there. And we've taken Phase 1 of the restrooms, which is basically a stack of restrooms. It's the boys' room near the office, and it goes straight up in one other set of restrooms. And they're well underway there. We should complete those, we're hoping, by mid to late March, and then we'll move into Phase 2. There's five phases on the restrooms. So Wyandotte is very well underway. What do we got next? Claude Hike. Claude Hike's going well. We've basically demoed the exterior vestibule where the new wing's going. We've excavated the ground. We've done our proof rolls, done our testing. We need a couple more sunny days to dry it down so we can dig our footers and pour concrete, but we're ready to come up out of the ground. So that project's going very well, too. So Stony Point is similar to Claude Hike. We've done our proof rolls. We've got the bed laid for underneath the concrete slab. We're just waiting for it to dry up a little bit so we can dig footers, and then we can start laying block. We did come in and saw off a section of the building, an overhang, that was necessary to do. So we're well underway there. We just need a couple of good sunny days, and we can keep moving, so.
Mr. Stubble, would you remind us at Stony Point North, what are we doing there? How many classrooms?
We're building four classrooms there and a new secure entry. And that would be, we're going to build an office area there, and then we're going to renovate the old nurse's office and the teacher's lounge and reconfigure that.
Thank you.
And a new ceiling going in there with lights. And probably some small things I've forgotten because I'm nervous.
Thank you. And at Claude Hike, what are we doing?
Claude Hike, you are adding six classrooms. We're also going to add, modify one of the rooms and upgrade it to an art room, put a kiln in for them, rework the entry and the office area so that'll be a secure entry. And they're getting a new ceiling and lighting system to replace the dated system they had.
Thank you.
Could you clarify again what "secure entry" means?
Secure entry, we're touching every building, and basically it's access control into the building. It isn't just technology. It's, the way we're laying it out is if you're a guest coming to the building, you have to go, it makes you go through the offices. I don't, I'm a little hesitant to talk in too much detail in a public setting on everything that we're doing for a secure entry unless you tell me to. But it is a way of managing so that everyone has to come through the office and get a name tag because some of the buildings, you can get in there without staff knowing, and this is a way that we're managing them coming in.
We're essentially, too, Dr. Jaeger, creating vestibules at every school. So that secure entrance, really, folks have to then be buzzed in on the main doors, they do now in all of our facilities. But once they're buzzed in, they're into a secure vestibule area. They can't leave that enclosed vestibule area until, again, buzzed into the office. They can't be buzzed into the school from there. They have to be buzzed directly into the office at that point.
have to be buzzed directly into the office at that point. Then, the office person can check them in, whoever's there, and send them on their way. Then, they exit back out through the office into the, the heart of the school.
You should not be able to get in the building without being approved by the staff coming through. There's some other measures we're taking, too, so. Okay?
Thank you.
And what do we have? One more? Oh, Gloria Willis, who could first get the big one that's going on. Uh, that's going quite well. Um, the, uh, the, the pad for under the building is laid. We're digging, uh, uh, footings. We've got a few dug, but again, the weather's hurting us. Um, we did get our temporary power, uh, installed at all the buildings. Um, and we're, uh, laying site utilities to permanent power, so that's going on. There's a lot that'll, you'll drive by and go, "There's nothing happening." And then, all of a sudden, it'll come up out of the ground really fast. There's a lot that happens underground that we're working on now. Those are the main projects that are going on. There'll be a few more kicking off here soon. Arrowhead will start over spring break. Washington, uh, the renovation of the old wood shop area will start over spring break. Um, those are two that'll be kicking off. Um, Harmon will be kicking off over spring break also.
So, we'll have a completion of all of the high school academy spaces by the beginning of next school year.
Yes.
So, there's a lot of projects that are starting from this point forward. Don't have a guaranteed maximum price, uh, a GMP for today because we haven't bid anything out recently, but actually, there was a bid opening today for Grant Elementary Addition, so we anticipate bringing that, uh, before the board as we always do with the other report that I shared with you regarding, um, all of the vendors involved in that, hopefully at the March meeting. So, excited about all of the progress that's being made. I'm hoping that this format will create like a booklet so that it goes from year one all the way through year five, so we see the progress, uh, on each project as we start from early on to the completion of the projects for, uh, for all of the AD discrete projects. We're excited about it. So, thank you, Mark. I think the pictures are the best way to do it.
I have a question, Mark.
Yes, sir.
Now, uh, we, so let me understand this. We don't have a contractor for any of these. This is just being G P. You have a general contractor that is kind of designing the whole scope of the job.
Right. J.E. Dunn is our construction manager at risk.
Okay. So, we haven't gone out to bid on these four projects at this point?
We've gone out to bid on the ones he's spoken about, and they've started, yes.
They've already started. So, we've gone out to bid on those four projects?
Correct.
And when are they to start?
Uh, for, for these projects that I talked about tonight, they're already underway.
Okay, they're underway?
Yes.
Okay. Let me tell you my concern. You know, um, I, I've been out in the community. I talked to the community, and there doesn't seem to be, uh, a lot of diversity when it comes to the contractors, the subcontractors. Is there anything we can do about that?
We, we report to you and to the board. That's part of the inclusion, or participation inclusion, uh, report that we share with you when we do the guaranteed maximum price from J.E. Dunn. As a construction manager at risk, J.E. Dunn is responsible for all of the subcontractors. We've shared with the board all of the outreach efforts to try to increase all of the minority, women-owned and locally-owned businesses to be engaged in all of the projects throughout the bond. So, those percentages and those folks that are involved, when we go through those bid tabs in detail, it shows you everybody who's bid on every project and who has awarded those projects, and also identifies if they are a minority, a woman-owned or locally-owned business. So, to answer your question directly, is there anything we can do about it? We continue every, uh, project to encourage everyone that wants to bid on projects to please bid on those projects, and they're all vetted out appropriately.
You know, uh, a little insight. There are a lot of contractors out there that don't want to bid on the contracts because they think it's just a waste of time. Uh, because they've had, they, you know, I, I, and, and it might be just a perception, but it appears that J.E. Dunn has not really used a lot of minority contractors in the past, and when they, when he has, they have been given little menial jobs. And it, it, from, from this perspective, I wish we could do something about that. We can't really, we can't hold them, I guess, I guess, Greg, we can't really hold them accountable for, you, because I think I posed this question before. You said, you know, the best price.
Yeah. I mean, the, that's unfortunate if that's the case. I mean, it, it really is. And I, I think that what we can do and, and what we can encourage J.E. Dunn to do is to continue to encourage people to bid because it really comes down to the lowest responsible bidder, the lowest price that is bid on each project under Kansas law. That's who's going to get the work. And so, the way you increase, uh, participation is you get more minority contractors to bid on the projects. And the only way you do that is to encourage them to bid, and, and they know if they have the lowest price, they're going to get the work. I mean, that's just the law in Kansas, so.
That's the way it's supposed to work, yeah.
It is. And if, for whatever reason, if it's not, then that's something that needs to be brought to our attention. We can figure that out. But, um, you know, there's, there's no, nothing we as a district can do beyond that of just trying to get as many contractors, qualified contractors, to bid on the work. And, uh, you know, hopefully, the more that bid, the more likely there are going to be some that get the low, low contract and get the work. We've had some projects where we've had some success in that regard.
We have. But I think, um, it'd be, um, a positive move, Dr. Mather, if you'd invite J.E. Dunn back. I know they'll come back and report on things that have been bid out, but invite them back to review again their inclusion and diversity program. So, the whole board knows what it is designed to be, and then they can ask questions of how Dunn's doing that work.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
And one more comment. I think we asked, um, last time, we reviewed the contractors for the local to be split out from the minority and women. So, will we see that represented?
We're going to prepare that, that report as well for you. Uh, as I mentioned at that last board meeting, we actually keep that data separated, so we have the women, the minority, and local all separate. So, at the next GMP, you will get the report where it's separated out for you.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Yeah.
Any more questions?
I think, Doc, thank you. Uh, Dr. Jaeger asked for a list of the local businesses, minority businesses. Remember that? Anyway, um, in one of your presentations, you said that there was 200 or so minority, um, business contractors. Do you remember that? You can always go back and view the tape.
Yeah. No, I, I don't recall the number. J.E. Dunn actually has, uh, as part of their listing that they actually do email blast out to, and they disaggregate that number, so I don't know exactly how, how many minority, how many women, how many locally businesses they shoot it to, but I know it's hundreds and hundreds of people that are on that list.
Would you ask them to include that?
We can certainly ask them to bring that.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Helpful. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, we're ready for the reports of the superintendent.
Thank you very much. Item A, board, we ask that you approve the contract with Morgan Hunter as submitted by Dr. Mather. Dr. Mather?
Guess I should have stayed up here. My apologies. I didn't realize it was next. So, if I could get the, um, PowerPoint. Thank you. Dr. Lane, board members, I'm here this evening to talk to you about the Morgan Hunter, uh, contract, which is a contract that we utilize and have utilized, uh, now in our second year for substitute services, uh, in Kansas City, Kansas Public Schools. So, want to be able just to walk through some information with you, uh, as we have presented the contract before you for your, uh, action this evening. Want to talk a little bit about, because many of you were not on the original board two years ago, about what the rationale was for the original recommendation to go forward with, uh, Morgan Hunter. Uh, the primary focus and reason was that we wanted to increase our fill rate. You've heard us talk about that a lot. Basically, meaning we want to get more teachers in front of, um, kids. So, that was the primary focus because when we were running it ourselves, we had difficulty doing that. We wanted somebody who could focus full-time on recruitment and training of subs and then increase the overall subpool. Our focus is to educate all of our students and hire teachers, so we wanted somebody who did that as part of their job and their responsibility. And Morgan Hunter is one entity in which that is their primary focus. Somebody also to manage the subpool, meaning take care of all of the issues, and I'll go through that momentarily. There were also several increased advantages to the actual subs themselves for things that another entity outside of us as a school district could offer substitutes. Uh, and we cannot offer, for example, financial incentives to, for teachers. We can't do that for subs. But for attendance, sub attendance, Morgan Hunter and other entities like them can offer financial, uh, rewards or incentives for them. We also, they also can offer retirement plans and 401K plans and things of that nature that we cannot offer subs. At the time, we were looking at this, the Affordable Care Act health provisions were becoming somewhat prohibitive. So, anybody that was working potentially over 30 hours as a sub would be required then to be provided health insurance. Also had restrictions with CAPERS, so WAR is actually working after retirement. Sorry for the acronym. Uh, but CAPERS, working after retirement restrictions means that there is a fee, uh, applicable to substitutes, um, who come back to districts and work, uh, once, once again, get re-employed by the school district. So, that fee ranges anywhere from 12 to 30% on top of, uh, the wages that we pay them. Uh, and overall, we showed and presented a plan where we believed it was more cost-effective to utilize Morgan Hunter. Some of the current services that we have, um, been able to, uh, get involved with, with Morgan Hunter over the last couple of years, I won't read all of these to you, but we identify a column where Morgan Hunter takes care of all of these responsibilities over the next two to three slides. And a couple of checkmarks where you'll see the school district is involved as well. So, again, Morgan Hunter responsible for recruitment, retention, onboarding, all the hiring, all of the legal responsibilities regarding federal work status. Uh, but when it comes to complaints from the district staff regarding subs, we assist Morgan Hunter with that. Frankly, if we have a concern about a particular sub in one of our buildings, we can request that that sub not teach in our schools, or we can co-investigate with them any concerns that we have regarding potential subs. Morgan Hunter manages all the complaints from the subs regarding the district, our district staff, so we don't have to manage that complaint process. But we do, as I said a momentary ago, will co-investigate complaints as needed. So, most of the employee relations concerns are now handled by Morgan Hunter because all the substitutes are Morgan Hunter employees, not district employees. Promised I wouldn't read all of these to you, uh, but I think it's important to highlight a few of them. So, our Aesop system, so you know, is the system we utilize to call in if we need a sub. This is for every single employee has to call into Aesop. So, even if they don't need a sub, they have to call their absence, absence into the Aesop system. So, that tracks all of the district absences for us, uh, and that Aesop system is new as of last year. We had SubFinder, uh, the year, prior to that, uh, year of 1516. Any of the licensure issues or requirements Morgan Hunter, Morgan Hunter also addresses on our behalf. We don't have to deal with any of those issues. You can see the rest of them. Couple of other things. One that we, um, or, we deal with is we audit all of our invoices that come in from Morgan Hunter to ensure that we're aligned with the workers that, and the fees that they've assessed and invoiced us for. They, of course, track and audit all of the hours worked by the, each of the respective subs. They manage all of their own payroll concerns. We don't have to do that. And again, they can manage the CAPERS if any restrictions for working after retirement. One of the advantages for working for a substitute, um, organization like Morgan Hunter is that there are no restrictions for retired teachers from CAPERS. They can work for, with Morgan Hunter at no capping or no restriction. They also, uh, focus on all of the payroll taxes. Um, again, all the, the reporting requirements that we ask them for. Uh, and they also submit quarterly reports and monthly reports to us regarding absences, uh, and any trend data that we ask them for. So, you can see through these three or four slides that Morgan Hunter does provide us quite a few services for the contract which we're presenting to you this evening for your consideration. Want to talk a little bit about the subpool that Morgan Hunter has. We'd ask them to break down demographic data for us because we're always interested in that. Currently, Morgan Hunter has a subpool of 364 teachers. When we were running our own subpool, we ran about 180 subs in the district. So, Morgan Hunter, of those 364 folks that they draw from, they don't all just, uh, work for KCK, but when you look at the graph to the left, the pie chart, 53% of them, uh, are non-residents of Kansas City, Kansas, and 47% of their total pool, subpool, is KCK residents. Folks that just work out of the 364 subs, approximately 200, 209 of those subs work solely for KCK. They don't work for any other school district. When they are employed by Morgan Hunter, they have an opportunity, if they so choose, to work for whatever school district that Morgan Hunter supports and services. But 209 of them choose not to, and they choose to work solely for our school system. Of those 209, 45% are in fact residents of Kansas City, Kansas, and 55% are non-residents of Kansas City, Kansas. We also asked for the ethnic breakdown of our subs so we know who's in front of our kids. Uh, again, the pool to the left is the total pool that Morgan Hunter has recruited and retained for their subpool, 364. 55% are Caucasian, 38% African-American, and I think that's 2%, 7% is other. Um, and when you look at the, the folks that are coming directly to KCK only, we have 47% Caucasian subs, 45% African-American subs, and 8% other. And that's self-reported by the individual subs. So, another thing that we talked about was the fill rate and the comparison. In 1516, uh, which is not on here, but 1516, we had approximately a 76% fill rate when we're running the subs pool. That was a concern for us. Well, we brought to the board recommendation to hire somebody who could recruit the subs. This is a comparison of the fill rate from first semester of last year to first semester of this year because we don't have our second semester data yet for the whole year. I can't compare year to year. I would not be comparing apples to apples. So, in 1617, you can see the number of sub, or of absences that have occurred. So, you've got almost 14,000 absences in the first semester, days of absence that we had to, uh, that we had to get, uh, filled for subs versus this year, we had right now, same period, first semester only, over 16,000 absences. So, the absences, at least first quarter to first quarter, overall for our school system have increased, uh, 15%, just in the absenteeism. The fill rate associated with that is a 76%. Uh, my apologies, is on there. It's the green bar from the prior year, 1516. Last year, our first year, full year, we had a 92% fill rate, and currently, we're at approximately 83% through the first, um, semester, through the second quarter of the first semester. So, we're staying above where we were, uh, but as the year goes on, we'll continue to track that. So, we met our goal, one of our goals is increasing the fill rate, meaning we're getting more subs than what we were getting when we were doing it, but we're still not 100%. This basically still says that we got folks not, not in front of kids in classrooms, but it's improved. Questions about that information?
When you say, when you say not in front of kid, what?
Well, we have, if you've got an 83% fill rate, that means you've got a percentage of teachers, like 15% roughly, that are, we could not obtain a sub for that needed a sub. So, what happens is that we then pay our teachers to cover those classes. They volunteer to do that, basically meaning they're going to split the classes and do class coverage. And so, we end up not paying a sub, but we pay our existing teachers to do class coverage. So, kids have an adult in front of them, but not maybe for the whole class or all day if it's an elementary school, depending on the grade level. Yeah, that's true.
When you said that 15% increase, does that include teachers who are gone because of the fact that they're on field trips, taking students away, and the sub have to be called in? Is that, was that included in the previous frame that you had?
The amount of absences that we're experiencing?
Yes.
Amount of absences actually include disability, FMLA, professional leave, uh, sometimes a roving sub coverage for professional development that goes on in the schools, any other kind of associated leave, bereavement, emergency leave, all encompassing. Somebody who goes on a field trip, we don't typically call in a sub just for that reason, uh, because the teacher's with the kids and they're on the field trip. So, there may not be a reason for, have a sub for that. But it encompasses all of the required leave categories. That helps.
What kind of credentials do the subs have to have?
Well, they have to have, um, certification. They can either have their regular substitute certification or an emergency certification. So, if they have the emergency certification, they're limited to 15 days, um, to be able to sub at any one location. And the regular substitute certification then allows them 30 days. Am I correct? 30 da, over 30 days or long-term. Do I get that right? I'm looking at those guys because they take care of that certification. And we don't have to worry about their certifications. Now, we work in collaboration with Morgan Hunter to request waivers if need be, uh, and we have received some waivers so that we could place... And we have received some waivers so that we could place folks in a long-term vacancy or a long-term position over a length of time. Waivers are not going to be easily obtained by the state because they're not intended to be utilized to cover a vacancy, if you will. They're intended to cover, like for example, I think Ms. Troy was sharing with me, like a Spanish teacher. So we have somebody who speaks Spanish, and we want to paint a waiver to keep that Spanish-speaking Spanish teacher in front of kids. We can do that for a year and get that waiver approved. So those two certifications are required. Other questions about that information?
Well, you used the word that teachers volunteered. That's not always true. I taught for thirty years, you didn't really get a choice. They came to you and said, "We need somebody to cover." You could say no, but they weren't accepting no. Now, I don't know if it's changed. But for me, that's what we, and you know, it was kind of hard because you taught all day. Doesn't mean that you want to help. And then planning time is always an issue. And that's still a concern that a lot of teachers have, that they're not getting enough subs in the building. So therefore, you lose your planning time because you got to go. And you want to be a team player, but you still want to be able to do your work. And it's hard when you taught seven hours and now you don't get that free plan, you know, the time that you have for yourself because you got to cover. So I wouldn't use the word volunteer because this is not always a choice.
Well, you're probably right. The word volunteer probably was not the best word because actually compensate folks for doing that. So when they do choose to do it, if they so choose to do it, we do compensate them for their time. But you're absolutely right. I think it exemplifies the need to try to get more subs in front of our students. It's exactly what we want to do is to try to increase that fill rate so we don't have our classroom teachers that are teaching all day long having to do class coverage as well.
Because that's my concern. You still find a lot of people having to cover. You know, I got my twenty-five, and then we got to split up these two classes, split the class, where they go here, they go there, and people are a little...
Yeah, it makes it tough. It's tough for the students, it's tough for the teachers, absolutely. It's exactly why I want to continue to try to increase that sub pool. It's exactly the reason. So if there aren't any other questions about that, we'll move on to cost comparison. What I put together for, and I've done this before when we first provided to you a contract for Morgan Hunter, was really trying to look at a cost comparison about what we're paying Morgan Hunter versus what we would do if we were doing it ourselves. Now, this is just this current year to date, so we haven't gone through a whole year, and I'll walk through what these are. So to date, we have paid for subs, two point five million dollars to Morgan Hunter. If we were to have run them ourselves, the cost would be two point seven million dollars. The reason being is that we were paying a higher daily rate at a hundred and forty dollars a day for the day-to-day subs. The standard going rate is a hundred and twenty dollars. That's what we pay our subs under Morgan Hunter for just the day-to-day. The emergency or long-term vacancy subs make much more than that per day. So I went back to what we originally were paying folks so I could make sure that we had an increased cost. But if we actually paid the same amount, there would be a bigger discrepancy and gap. Frankly, it cost more for us to do that as well. So fees associated to date with Morgan Hunter are half, just over a half a million dollars. That is the up-charge fee for them. It's point three six percent on the current contract for the short-term subs and point two nine percent on the long-term subs. In the current contract before you this evening, Morgan Hunter has reduced the up-charge fee from point three six to point three three. Fringe benefits associated with managing subs, there's not a cost associated with Morgan Hunter. There is for them, but it's not a cost that I've applied. To me, that's part of what we're paying Morgan Hunter for the fees and for their actual cost for subs. It's all built into that. For us, I have to look at health insurance, social security, Medicare, not employee bonuses because that's not relevant to us. But for us, it would be about two hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars, and that's off of the two point seven million. So we're looking at about ten point six five percent for fringe benefits roughly. That's probably conservative. Background checks, again, we don't have a cost. Morgan Hunter doesn't show a cost. They have to pay for that, so whatever they're paying for their background checks is up to them based on the fee that we provide them. For us, it's about forty-three dollars per person every time we do a background check. I put four hundred subs in there. If we kept what they had at three hundred and sixty, the dollar figure would be slightly less, but roughly seventeen thousand dollars for us to complete background checks over the course of the year. Recruitment and training, onboarding, that's training all the subs, getting them ready to be prepared for their sub assignment, putting them in front of the classroom. I estimate it, pretty conservative, pretty low, about twenty thousand dollars. It's really going to be staff time that we've utilized in the past with the Human Resources Department to try to get in front of folks and do that training. That small dollar amount doesn't reflect probably the amount of time that goes into that. Work comp is another benefit and estimate. For us, I figure that at one point five percent, always do for both that and unemployment, both as benefits to the total dollar amount. So the one point five percent or the forty-one thousand is that percentage from the two point seven million. To date, Morgan Hunter has shared with us that they have expended over two hundred thousand dollars in work comp claims for the substitute pool. Unemployment claims, they've had over thirty-four claims, not an associated dollar amount. They don't know how much each of the folks that have filed for unemployment have actually gained from unemployment, but they have had over thirty-four claims to date from their folks applying for unemployment services. The ACA health insurance cost is what I referred to earlier. This is a cost where we would have to start paying our subs, health coverage, if in fact they work thirty hours or more per week. How they do this under ACA is they have a look-back period, and there's this long confusing formula. You have to average if an employee, or in this case, a substitute is working an average of thirty hours a week over a period of time. So for me, I figured thirty-six months, which is about the length of a school year. And I took the estimate of seventy subs that we may be having to pay health insurance on. The reason I came up with seventy subs is because I asked Morgan Hunter, "How many of your subs have worked over a thousand hours to date?" So they had, the breaking point was seventy subs have worked a thousand hours or more. So if you actually take thirty hours and you multiply that by thirty-six weeks, you're around that thousand-hour mark. So I took the conservative side and said, seventy people maximum. Might, we might have to pay health insurance on. So that's, that equaled, times sixty-two fifty, which is our health insurance plan to date, almost a half a million dollars, four hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars. What's important, though, is that data also showed me that almost ninety additional staff that they currently have, subs that they currently have on staff, worked anywhere from five, let's see, five, I think it was four hundred and ninety-nine hours up to nine hundred and ninety-nine hours. So that gap just below the thousand mark, thousand-hour mark, they had even ninety more people that could have teetered over to the thousand easily enough over time. I didn't count them because I don't know if they ever would work that much or not. So I went on the conservative side. That's how I came up with that figure.
Dr. Mathers, help me understand your Medicare costs.
When I look at social security, Medicare, and all the associated benefits, I look at the two point seven, I multiply that by point zero seven six five for the FICA or Medicare, and then the three percent with unemployment and work comp and social security are all in that one. So it's ten point six five percent.
And the work comp, are these, are these injuries? What was that estimate?
It's just an average percentage on the low end. I took one, one point five percent based off of the two point seven. Could be a lot more than that, could be a lot less. So I tried to be on the conservative side and just did one and a half percent.
Are you aware, are you aware of these, these claims?
There's not claims for our side because we're not running the program. The two hundred thousand dollar claim was shared by Morgan Hunter that that's what they've, for the work comp claims, that they've spent two hundred thousand dollars on.
Are you aware of the individuals who file these claims?
No, I'm not because they're not our employees.
They're not our employees?
No, this is for Morgan Hunter's employees.
They sub here?
Right.
You're not aware of their claim?
I had to estimate, I have to estimate if in fact they become our employees, would we have the same amount of claims? I'm estimating conservatively at forty-one thousand dollars. And I'm simply doing that up one and a half percent.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Well, did they say where they got hurt at?
They're not our employees, so they don't share that information with us. But that's their responsibility. It's one of frankly the benefits for us that we don't have to manage that. We don't have to worry about those claims.
So if they got hurt at one of our schools, I know it's not our concern.
Well, it's always our concern, but yes. It's Morgan Hunter's responsibility.
Why don't you hire some of these teachers instead of subs, since we're shorter teachers? Have they been approached?
Well, we haven't approached the subs. The subs obviously know of all of our postings and our openings. If they want to apply to be a full-time teacher, we'd certainly encourage anybody to do that. But we don't recruit from the sub pool to be teachers directly. Most of the folks that are in the sub pool just want a sub. And they want to be able to pick and choose when they want to, when they want a sub, and frankly, where they want a sub and what building.
But Dr. Mathers, if a substitute came forward wanting a permanent position, they would...
They could certainly apply. We would encourage that. So also another cost comparison, as we look at these issues and looking at how we would continue to manage a sub pool, I put a hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars, which equates to approximately three support staff added to do that. In the past, we had two additional support staff in the HR department to manage the subs that we were running then, which was about a hundred and eighty subs or so. I've added it to three for two reasons. One, we have no subs. So if we manage our own subs, we have to get them again, and we have to recruit them. We have to do all of the issues that I showed you on the first three or four slides. We have to manage all of that. So we feel like three people could provide all of the recruitment, retention, training, orientation, deal with all of the employee-related issues sufficiently. Morgan Hunter currently uses six full-time staff members to staff our schools and other schools. So six full-time staff members, and I reduced that to three. Added the benefits, same as before. It's a ten point six five percent off of that staff because I wanted to make sure that was in there. And then I mentioned the CAPERS. So folks that are retired from the school district and they want to work after retirement, here I have twenty-four to thirty percent, but the CAPERS keeps changing. So now it's my understanding that for the first twenty-five thousand dollars that a teacher makes after they've retired and they return to the district to work, the percentage, the fee percent is twelve percent that we have to pay on top of the wages. After twenty-five thousand is up to thirty percent per employee. I have no way of truly figuring out a way to calculate that because, one, I don't know how many would be retired, don't know how many hours they would work, if it's going to be the first twenty-five thousand or over twenty-five thousand. So I conservatively put a hundred and fifty thousand in there, could be lower than that, could be much higher. I honestly don't know.
Would you explain the acronym, please?
WAR, working after retirement.
Thank you.
Sorry. Probably feels like war.
I have a question in regard to retirees. Now, do they still have to take a test and do all that in order to sub? Because I know when I retired, I thought it, it seemed ludicrous to me that I just retired and I wanted to sub, and I have to take a test. That, it just sounds absurd.
Does Morgan Hunter provide testing?
I'm just asking if they do that still.
Yeah, I don't know because we don't hire them, so no testing for employees once they fail? We did.
Yeah, yeah, I know they used to do it. That's why I was just...
They do not. So I'm just trying to find out if Morgan Hunter currently does that. So they do not do that.
And what's the, what's the type of test, what type of test is this?
Well, I know when I retired in twenty-twelve, you had to take a test in order to sub. And that's why a lot of retirees didn't do it because they thought we just retired.
You mean aptitude test?
Yeah.
Ms. Troy can maybe explain what the test is.
The exam was called STEADY. It was an acronym. And that exam, you know, Ms. Page is exactly what you're speaking of. It's a substitute aptitude test. And though it was designed for individuals who did not come directly out of the classroom, it was a hiring practice that it was administered to all substitutes to comply with equity in hiring.
So you're saying it's not being done, or you don't know it's being done?
Morgan Hunter does not do that, and since we're not managing our own subs, we were doing it when we were managing our own subs.
So we don't know the aptitude of those three hundred, two hundred people in the classroom?
Morgan Hunter does all of their interviewing and screening of their applicants as their employees. I don't know the aptitude of their employees.
Okay, just for reference, there were some inconsistencies with that because just like Paige, I did apply and was told I would have to take the test. But then I made a phone call and stated my situation, the fact that I was retired after thirty-five years. I did not have to take it and was hired.
I appreciate that.
My comment would be that Morgan Hunter is located in Overland Park on one hundred and tenth. What efforts has there been done to be recruiting efforts from Morgan Hunter to come in and recruit from the community?
Well, I think that when we look back at the makeup of the subs, it's a reflection that when you've got fifty-five percent, I'm trying to read that myself, so I apologize, fifty-five percent being Kansas City, Kansas residents for the subs that are working in KCK only, or forty-seven percent of their total sub pool is a reflection of the recruiting efforts to try to stay within the community as much as possible. And they service multiple school districts, so it's not just our school district.
Right, well, I would recommend to them that there should be some recruiting efforts here within the city limits for a concentrated effort to people in the community who want to teach in our schools. Again, sure, it's fifty-five percent may seem nice, but to me, I still think it's a low percentage. When, I know when we helped bring Amazon here, one of the requirements was, our goal was eighty percent of the community here in Kansas City, Kansas, would try to be from this community. So I think that we, as a school district, also should have that higher standard of subs population. But that's just a recommendation for them to come here, just like we had a recruiting, I think it was Saturday, some recruiting effort. I just think it would be good for Morgan Hunter to do something like that.
I will share your information with them and concern, absolutely. I can tell you, I do know that they actually interview twelve to fifteen people a day for subs. So they're doing active recruiting. I don't work for Morgan Hunter, so I don't know exactly all of their strategies that they're employed, but I'll certainly pass that on as well. On the next slide, I wanted to show you, I wanted to go back to fifteen sixteen and give you actual expenses for us to run our program. At that time was four point three million. Our absenteeism rate, which was much less, was much less than it was even in sixteen seventeen last year. And then sixteen seventeen estimation on if we ran the program. So this is exactly what I showed the board a couple of years ago for fifteen sixteen and then sixteen seventeen if we contracted with Morgan Hunter and if in fact we ran it ourselves. So you can still see there was an elevated cost if we ran it ourselves, so. Exact same categories in there that I showed you with the current seventeen eighteen school year. But I just wanted to have that for your reference as well. Talked about some of these advantages to the actual subs that we can't provide as a school system. One is their savings plan, their retirement-type plans like their 401Ks. There's no restriction in the amount of hours that they work for that entity. They have a variety of recognition programs, including monetary incentives and bonuses for participation and how many times they sub. They are paid weekly. When we were running our own subs, we paid our folks every two weeks. So subs like getting paid at the end of the week. That was just an advantage that they provided that we could not. Flexible work schedules, of course, subs can choose, go on to Aesop at any time and select and choose where they want to sub and how often they want to sub, and if they want to sub for a few hours or however they want to do that. So there's increased opportunities also to work outside of our school district, and those are the advantages I presented to the board a couple of years ago. And then finally, I just wanted to share with you what other people are doing throughout the state and really closer to us in the metropolitan area, with the exception of Wichita. Districts that are managing their own subs currently are Wichita, Blue Valley, and Aletha. Aletha shared with us that they have over seven hundred and thirty subs in their sub pool, and they still do not have a hundred percent fill rate. So they, they have a great sub pool of seven hundred-plus subs. Districts using Morgan Hunter are listed to your left. That's Bonner Springs, Turner, Lawrence, DeSoto, Udonia, and Leavenworth. And Kelly Services is another substitute service entity. And the following schools use the Kelly Services. Shining Mission, Topeka, North Kansas City, Lee Summit, Kansas City, Missouri, and a multiple Missouri charter schools. So that's what everyone else is doing in the district. So I wanted to share that information with the board, kind of give you a little bit of his... of history and rationale for why we presented the contract initially to you. This evening, I present the contract for your consideration and action this evening with the recommendation to approve the contract for the next year for the reasons I have outlined in the presentation. Happy to address any questions.
Well, Madam President, I have spoken with some of the districts that use Kelly Services. And when Shiny Mission, if, if, when Shiny Mission went to Kelly, there was an outpouring of parental discontent. And I have, I've spoken with teachers who are not satisfied with the subs. So I guess my question is, do you, do you ever hear these comments? Do you ever listen to the folks on the ground that are not satisfied with Morgan?
Well, yes, absolutely. If they come forward and share their information, that's part of the investigation process that I outlined earlier. Absolutely, if people are not satisfied, we want to hear what the dissatisfaction is and make every effort we can to improve that.
Dr. Mather, sorry to interrupt, but you did a survey. What did the survey tell us?
Yeah. And do you have the results of that survey? Jen gave me the results of a survey she did. Is that what you have?
That's-
Okay. Ms. Holt, please. Ms. Holt gave me the results, so I can actually share those, or she can come up and share them.
So we did survey on this on the Negotiations Annual Teacher Survey. And what we heard statistically was that about, when we said, we asked two questions about it, we said, are you satisfied for the past two years when we've been working with Morgan Hunter on the coverage rate? So how the coverage has been compared to the past? How satisfied are you? And then we also asked, what about when you get a sub? What about the quality of the sub? So when we asked the coverage rate, we had about 63% total negative respondents, and about 37% were neutral or positive about the coverage rate. And then with the quality of the sub, though, we had about 72% being positive or neutral, and then 29% dissatisfied. Anecdotally, I've heard there's a difference that when we shifted systems, buildings that traditionally haven't had a hard time getting sub coverage, now there's been some kinks in the system that make even those buildings that historically have not had any trouble getting subs and keeping subs, they're having a hard time with fill rate as well. So those are the kind of anecdotal and statistical pieces that I can offer from the teacher perspective.
Can you give me the numbers first of, that you gave? 67% of what?
So when we said, are you satisfied with the coverage? We had 37% were neutral or positive, 63% were negative, those numbers. And I know that the numbers are rounding, so I would just round. So if they're not perfect, it's because I was pulling a couple of columns together and rounding. And then when it said satisfied with the quality of the sub,
Excuse me.
it shifted to 72% was satisfied or neutral, and 29% was dissatisfied.
And your number of surveys?
That response was a pretty small pool. It was about a 330-person response. So out of all our 1,900, we had 330 respond on that one.
Would these individuals be in the union that you surveyed?
No, we survey everyone.
You covered everybody? Well, just 330 out of the-
And in all fairness, we've had, we've done about five surveys kind of between December and February, and then this one came at the tail end, and it was our lowest response rate. So we might have surveyed them out.
Thank you very much. We also surveyed administrators, Dr. Mather. What did the administrators tell us?
I'll have to get that. I don't have that with me, so. David, did you have that somewhere?
Questions? Is David looking for? I will wait on Mr. Smith if he finds it and helps share it. I'll go on with other questions.
Any other questions? Thank you. We'll need-
Do we know how many retirees work for Morgan Hunter?
I don't have that number. I can get that for you. I don't know how many are retired versus not retired.
Because I was wondering, if we did our own system, how many retirees would we lose coverage on because of the restrictions for capers and stuff? If we have retirees that are working for Morgan Hunter that are doing four to five days a week, if they came back to us, we would have to limit their-
Well, there'd be that fee that we talked, I shared that working after retirement's anywhere from 12 to 30% fee on top of it. Estimated that conservatively, because I don't know. I mean, we may have no retired teachers. But I'd put the $150,000 on there just as an estimate of working after retirement.
What is the fee comparison? I'm sorry, were you? What is, what is the fee comparison to Kelly Services?
I did not negotiate a contract with them, so I don't know what their up charge is for that.
Okay.
Yeah. And I don't have the contracts of those school districts, so. They just shared that that's who they're using.
From the retirees that I know, most people like the old system because they like the personal touch, that if they knew you, they could call and say, hey, Paige, can you help me out? Now, my goal was never to go over a whole lot of hours, just a little bit, stay in touch with the kids. And if somebody called me personally, I went. And a lot of people were upset because we made more with the old system than what you make with this. If you're only going to do, I think before, was it 100, 125, 100 and something, or 100?
Further short-term subs is $140 a day.
Yeah. Now, that got your attention. As a retiree, it got mine. I did it for, and then I didn't like the new system. That's just my personal thing. And from the people that I talked to who are retired, they miss the personal touch. Having that relationship with Chef of Wind, Norma, and all of them, people appreciate that because they could call, hey, I need you. No problem. What do you want me to do? And we did because we wanted to help, and we appreciated them and the way that they treated us. Sometimes you don't have that. I know I'm not a techie person and into all of that, but you appreciate, I think, as a senior citizen, that personal touch. And then with this system, again, from what I've talked to some of the newer teachers, their concern is them having to cover so much because you don't have enough subs. And it's not a choice. They have to. And even though you're getting paid, it's not what you planned to do. You look forward to having your planning period to work on and get things together because I didn't have any kids, but for a lot of the younger ones, they got kids. So they're trying to maximize their time. If you're having to cover more than what you expect to, you're trying to be a team player, but it gets old because it wasn't a choice. They got a thing, a rotation, it's your turn, your turn, your turn.
Could you clarify the system that was mentioned previously that was not correctly allocating people to the right school? You said, you mentioned there was problems with assignments?
I don't know if I mentioned there was problems with assignments. I mentioned that the fill rate was much lower when we were running it ourselves. Is that what you're referring to, Dr. Yeager?
No. I can't think of her name. Jen-
Oh, Ms. Holt.
Jen mentioned that there were some problems with the signing.
She had mentioned, I think, and I don't want to put words in your mouth, so correct me if I'm wrong. I think she was mentioning that there are some schools that did not have problems getting subs in the past and have experienced anecdotally that they are, in fact, now having some difficulty getting subs.
And what is, what specifically is that difficulty? Is it a system issue? Is it-
I think it's actually a choice issue by subs. Subs choose if they want to go to a particular building or not. They have to go in and actually sign up, if you will, for where they want to sub. So when we look at, we see those kinds of trends, and we're trying to work with Morgan Hunter to find out what's going on, if anything. Sometimes it's just folks don't want to work at school X, or more people want to work at school A. So, but what Jen was sharing anecdotally with me this evening as well is that there was a couple of schools that said that they were having difficulty getting subs.
I think that's where the personal touch comes from that you may want to mention, is that, again, come into the, our community, have that touch, or sit down with someone who may want that face-to-face communication and help them do that. I think that's what I'm hearing would, would help out with that problem situation that was mentioned.
And when they started, they still actually do that with their active recruiting. They come into our community, they have orientation sessions here, kind of recruiting, hiring fairs, if you will, specifically for subs. So they come into the district, actually use the district office for that, that very event, and they do all of the orientation sessions. But absolutely, those are areas that we can continue to focus and strengthen on and get more of our folks that live in KCK who want to sub. In both cases, it's going to be if we run it or if somebody else runs that, we're going to have that same challenge.
What did you find the, the problem or the challenge when you ran it? Was it the people didn't have the credentials, or they just? What, what did you find?
The biggest issue, Dr. Wendell, is we just couldn't find enough people. We just cannot find enough people to fill the sub rates. And we were doing good to keep it at about 75, 76%. So our sub pool just wasn't-
You had, you had staff that had, had credentials in HR?
Yes. We have staff that have credential in HR. They did recruiting of subs. Our sub pool is much smaller. So we had a pool of about 180 people because we don't just recruit subs. Even in HR, they're recruiting to fill positions. So our sub pool is smaller, and we had a harder time with, with getting folks in front of kids. 75, 76% of the time when you had subs, on average. That was probably the biggest difficulty. And then managing all of it. It's a lot of employee relations issues and, but, you know, we do that with 4,000 employees now. But it's just part of it. And that's like all the things that I just went through, those were the challenges and why we presented to the board to have a contract. Cost and fill rate, two primary issues.
Austin, what?
Fill rate.
Fill rate. And your fill rate is what now?
It's averaging at this point through the first semester, only 83%. Some days it's a 98%, some days it's 83%. So that's the average over the period right now. End of last year, 92%, I believe it was. Did you get that information?
Yes, I just wanted to quickly comment, Ms. Page, your comment about the system transfer. So at the time, we went from managing that sub pool on our own to then going with Morgan Hunter was also the ASOP timeframe, when we made that big switch from the system use. So I just wanted to do a quick point of clarification that Morgan Hunter's team is in between like 5:30 and 6:30 every morning. They do personal phone calls to who we consider our subs in that pool. They work with them individually to make placement. They begin calling immediately. So I just wanted to clarify in the event that with that transfer, there might have been some miscommunication, that they utilize both the system where I can go in and self-select a position, but then they also call, do personal phone calls to the subs, and they have worked hard to establish those relationships, both with the individuals that we had on our staff who may have joined theirs and the individuals who joined them afterward. So it is not just a system electronic placement process. It is also a personalized phone call.
Thank you for that. Appreciate it.
But we own the ASOP sys, the software?
We lease it. Yeah, we, we pay a fee annually, yes.
Okay. Well, Madam Chair, I've had so many negative comments from other schools and their, their boards. I'm prepared to, to suggest that we do not renew this contract and that we hire people, HR people with credentials to, to get on this. And that's the motion. The, the discussion, we've, we've kind of raised the question, you know, what, what is the problem with the absenteeism? We haven't addressed that. So this is connected to a larger problem. But based on negative comments from both faculty here and boards from other, primarily Shiny Mission, I mean, we do not renew the contract.
So you, you were saying Shiny Mission had a problem with MHED?
Kelly Services.
Oh, Shiny Mission has a problem with Kelly Services.
That's my motion, ma'am.
I second it.
The motion's been made and seconded to not renew the contract with Morgan Hunter. Any comments?
What's the alternatives if the contract is not renewed? Could you explain that a little more?
The alternative will be going back to, as Dr. Wendell indicated, having our staff recruit substitutes and then get them placed in classrooms and essentially just run the program. So we'd have to hire staff in order to manage the substitute placement program, and then first we have to build up a pool of subs because right now we have zero subs.
But those 200 are from KCK?
That's correct. Currently, they do not work for us, but they work for Morgan Hunter.
But they come into the classroom?
Yes.
And they're in our buildings?
So we would have to build up our pool-
Right.
-for subs for that.
So we have higher coverage under Morgan Hunter.
Fill rate, yes, we have higher coverage.
Higher fill rate. The costs are lower in Morgan Hunter. And last year, we had a 90-some percent fill rate at the end of the year?
92%.
92%. We all know this year has been real difficult because of everyone getting the flu. All, all the workforces around here have talked about how their absenteeism's just gone through the roof. So better fill rate, more opportunities for retirees to work. We don't have to worry about limiting how many hours someone works that we have to provide them with insurance because Morgan Hunter takes care of that. So people, some people are complaining they're not getting enough coverage. But I also have heard from people saying that they have better coverage than they had before when we were running it. So I, to me, with the concerns that Dr. Yeager brought up, that we can take to Morgan Hunter to say, we would like to see a little bit more community outreach and things that we can improve upon, I think that we have, I, I would vote to redo the contract for one more year to see if they would address our concerns, just because we have a lot of things on our table this year, and we're having to rehire our people to run the system and then try to get more people in our subsystem, which some of these people may not want to come back because they can pick and choose which districts they want to sub for with Morgan Hunter without having to worry about juggling two or three different subsystems. That's, that's my comment.
I think we should not sign that contract. If our teachers are saying 63% and they're in the trench, they're in there dealing with this, we should do everything we can to make them happy and give them the very best that we possibly can, along with our students. And you do get a choice. It doesn't matter, you, if, when I sub, I had worked in Missouri, I worked over here, I have those choices. I went where the money was. We tended to pay more here than with the other places. But I'm still concerned about our teachers, and I don't think it's fair to them that if someone's not here, that you do a lot of subbing and they don't get their planning period. That's important. Our teachers are working hard, and we need to give them the very best that we possibly can.
Oh, the last comment I would like to make is that, make is that Morgan Hunter is a recruiting agency. So if we do decide to do our own hiring, that we partner with them too because there's a, a certain percentage of, that we can do since they are a recruiting agency. So some type of partnership may be there to increase the substitute number so that we won't, so we can increase that fill rate. But I think it would be doable, and I have faith in our team to make that decision if we choose to do it in-house.
Any other comments before the vote?
Well, I have a comment. I have, now, when's the termination of this? When's the, this contract over?
June 30th.
June 30th. So we have until June 30th. If we do go with another company, how soon could we be up and running to be able to- If we do go with another company, how soon could we be up and running to be able to replace Morgan Hunter?
Are you asking if we run it ourselves or if we go with another company? If we run it ourselves, we would probably have to immediately start hiring staff and start recruiting now so that we could be ready to go for summer school programs in July that may be operational and jumping right into August. So that's why we brought the contract to you as early as possible.
Any comments? Call for the vote. All those in favor?
I'd like a roll call vote, please.
Roll call vote.
So the motion is to discontinue the contract?
I think technically it's to not renew the contract.
Not renew.
Yeah, trying to discontinue the current contract.
Not renew.
Right.
Correct.
Ms. Drew?
I, no, not to renew, I agree to not renew the contract.
So in favor of the motion?
In favor of the motion, thank you.
Mr. Brown?
I'm in favor of the motion.
I'm in favor of the motion.
Ms. Jones?
No.
Ms. Hemphries?
No.
Dr. Win?
Yes.
Dr. Jaeger?
Yes.
Motion passes.
So Board, once the team has an opportunity to frame out our next steps, we'll bring back a report to update you on how we're moving forward. And with your permission now, Board, I'd like to move to item D and then we'll back into B and C because we have teachers here that are waiting to present and we want to be respectful. So we'll go to item D and we ask that you accept a report on the pupil teacher ratio task force submitted by David Smith.
Good evening again, Board.
Good evening.
I'm here with two teachers, Ms. Leslie Stewart and Elizabeth Alt from Mark Twain and Washington, who are going to share the presentation. Want to begin with our goal. Each student will exit high school prepared for college and careers in the global society. The work of the PTR committee was really focused on improving, talking about how we can look at the pupil teacher ratio to reach this goal. Your strategic priority that we're focused on with this is high expectations for student achievement. And I'm going to turn, oh, now I'll turn it over to Elizabeth Alt.
So there were lots of people, as you can see, lots of people involved in this from various levels. Oh, I'm in front of a microphone, that will help. From various levels, from K twelve, so K through twelfth grade, teachers, principals, counselors, we had instructional cultures, we had people who are part of the union, we had people who were not part of the union. We, of course, had our human resources department. We had people from the administration side and we had people specifically from the fine arts and specials electives domain. Do I press?
You just pressed it down.
Oh, fancy. And board members. So our, what we were asked to do is look at student teacher ratio or pupil teacher ratio and look at that effect on academic achievement. What would that do for our students? How would that improve their experience in Kansas City, Kansas public schools? And so we did a review of the research as we should always do. And we looked at other comparable districts and then we made some recommendations for further study. So we were, had the opportunity to have four meetings at the district office to go over what we were going, how we were going to work with this information and what we were looking for. So we looked at our study and we focused on our model of instruction. And we went through the research and we looked at what we were doing and looked at what other buildings were doing with regards to pupil teacher, oh goodness, pupil teacher ratio. And then we gathered all of our information together and came up with a plan. Our first meeting, we really focused on grounding our research and developing our scope. And we did that through looking at the essential standards for driven classrooms by Marzano and Moore. The, this first chapter really helped us focus and ground what we were looking at. So we weren't just pulling for information, we had a scope. We knew the area and the idea that we were looking at information for. So our second meeting is we read five articles that focused on the effects of pupil teacher ratios and what happened at those schools. A lot of the research was done in the kindergarten through third grade level, which really helped us kind of focus our research even more. You know, and it looked at the impacts of the effect, especially on students with special needs and students with low literacy levels. And then our third meeting, we looked at what our district does with regards to allocation of resources. And then we also looked at other districts, what a large, a district larger than us does. Then we also looked at a district who has all of their needs met. And then, and then we looked at smaller districts and what that looks like. And who is in charge of defining the pupil teacher ratio and what were the effects were, especially on standardized testing. And then our fourth, our meeting three, I suppose meeting three, I am sorry. And then our last meeting is we kind of reviewed what we did. We, we again looked at our scope and we narrowed and defined what we were proposing. There was a big concern that we can't just look at pupil teacher ratio in a bubble, that there's lots of forces that affect pupil teacher ratio and that is an important thing that we wanted to bring to the board. But we did have a general agreement on the following findings.
Hi again, I am Leslie Stewart. I'm a fifth grade teacher at Mark Twain Elementary School. And our findings, we have several. So I know, Board members, you have the PowerPoint also. So I just kind of want to summarize quickly what we came to. The very beginning one, very powerful, and I think, sorry, I'm on the wrong page, there we go, was that just the study showed us that there's a thirty percent decrease, or decreasing the cost by thirty percent in one state where the ratio went from twenty-two students to fifteen students per teacher. To understand that also, we are looking at an eighteen to one ratio in our school district right now. But it did impact the achievement. But we also noticed how expensive it was for that to happen. In this one, one of the things we discussed greatly was, you know, we're going to run into buildings where just because we want to lower our classrooms, we don't have the room. And then you're looking at situations such as co-teaching. How does that happen? How do you form two teachers together to, or bring two teachers together and have them co-teach? And we talked about how that relationship needs to be there. It needs to be the choice of teachers who want to co-teach and their dynamics with each other. You can't just have a hire, a new hire come in and, oh, now you're co-teaching with someone you don't know. So those are some things to consider also. Again, as Elizabeth said, we did notice that the decrease in the PTR, it is a larger effect in the primary grades. Also, our study was geared towards primary grades also. There was not a lot of data at the time, or that we have studied that showed in the upper levels. So we are still focusing on K through three right now. Again, supporting that, again, the early grades. But we also noted beginning teachers, giving them large class sizes may not have, may not always be beneficial. And so also considering that. And then the specific subjects, speaking in elementary school, you're looking at your specials. And in upper grades, you're looking at your core subjects. Then here, again, goes into the space, we also know that there's a shortage of teachers in our district. And so if we do open, or when we, when we do open this, that we're going to have to have that ability to hire quality teachers. We cannot fill the classrooms with teachers who are not performing at the standards our district expects of our teachers. Also, if we do lower our class sizes, that then has a domino effect on our specials classes. We're going to need our specials teachers, referring to PE, music, arts. We're going to need them in our buildings more because we're going to have more classrooms. And so they're going to have to work with four students each day instead of maybe splitting between schools as we currently do now. This one kind of just goes along with the same thing. As we saw earlier, we are already adding on to our schools. We're going to have schools that don't have room for growth. How do we address that change? That then will infect others. And if we look at the next slide, it affects, I'm going to, sorry, that's the one I want. There's other consequences that we don't want to have happen, meaning are we looking at changing boundaries? Are we looking at disrupting neighborhoods of where their children have always gone to this school and now they're going to a new school because we have to make that shift? And that is definitely a concern on, when we do this, how do we make it best for all the buildings? All the students and families. Also, the key word here is that deliberate approach. It would be important to take a deliberate approach to any change in PTR and to work with all impacted parties to plan for such a change. I don't think that we can dive into this right away. I don't think that we can wave that magic wand that Dr. Lane has and make this happen. So our recommendation to you, the PTR committee recommends that the Kansas City, Kansas public schools commit to a year's study of the feasibility of lowering the pupil teacher ratio for kindergarten classes in the KCK to an eighteen to one ratio. We are now open for questions.
What is the current ratio?
It depends school-wide.
Twenty-one to one for elementary schools.
And then it's a twenty-three to one.
Twenty-three to one for middle and high school.
Keeping in mind, Board, those are averages. You take the total number of students in a building and you divide it by that ratio to get your average.
And a little clarification, you spoke about maybe possibly boundary issues. Are there some areas in which they don't have the twenty-one to one? Which areas of the city is that, the certain area?
The challenge in that is if you make a change to your pupil teacher ratio at a specific building, there may not be in that building room, if they need to add an additional class to meet that ratio, there may not be room in that building to do that. And given the time it takes to make a change to that, the only option you may have immediately would be to change the boundary to eliminate a certain number of students so that, so that the building has a number that can be accommodated.
And there are other effects in the community. Some housing developments choose to take section eight housing, which moves people around and change, and so you'll have apartment buildings where all of a sudden they'll have an enrollment and then that option is no longer available to them.
To clarify my question, I wanted to know which areas of the city have a lower ratio than the average? Or what areas maybe have less than a twenty-one to one ratio? Do we know that information?
We do not have that information currently, but we can get that for you.
Yes, I would like to know if there's more populous area in one area of the city or what's really going on when we think about, based upon, I received some ACT scores and things of that nature. And you said that has an impact on academics, so the schools who have that.
Well, every school has the same ratio. When we do, when the staff works to create boundaries, they use both what our current population numbers are, as well as estimates for the future, to draw boundaries that would ensure that, that every building is going to be able to meet that ratio. So every building follows the same pupil teacher ratio, both at elementary and secondary levels.
Which is that twenty-two to one for, or twenty-one to one for elementary school?
So that's twenty-one to one, so twenty-two students to one classified teacher.
Classroom teacher.
Classroom teachers.
Now, I do know that, I can speak for the building I'm in, where we have recognized this as an issue and we have worked together to find a plan in our own building. And what we ended up doing was taking from that three, four, five and increasing class sizes up there so that we can have that additional teacher move down to accommodate our primary classes so that we can lower those numbers. But then we have a heavy top end up here and, you know, I'm sitting with twenty-eight students. So that's still a very large increase for the upper grades to have.
And as an ESL teacher, I'm fortunate to have a lower ratio. But I know that despite the gym teacher I work with and Spanish teachers I work with and the CTE teachers have a very high increase in ratio because of the way schedules have to work out to keep the ratio lower in the core classes.
Have we ever thought about in the district, Dr. Lane, because of the absentee and situation with substitutes, have we thought about maybe having on-call teachers that are assigned to buildings to where there is that extra support for teachers on a long-term basis? Not just as an emergency come, let's call, but have them on-call because according to the attendance situation, there's going to be absences every single day. There's going to be that need to fill in. But have we ever thought about that?
Our early childhood program actually had adjunct teachers that came every day and that allowed teachers, classrooms to be covered during absences, also allowed for coverage during professional learning. But let me say that I know that we have with the association a joint committee that's studying absenteeism and I would suggest that we wait for them to bring their recommendations so we can understand that more in what we do. So I'm curious, you said a year of study. Would you give us some idea of what would be entailed in that study? What are you thinking about or have you had a chance to talk through that?
I think as we've talked about, the challenges associated with individual buildings, really figuring out how they would manage that ratio. It would involve bringing together a group of building principals and district administrators and teachers to talk about the implementation. Specific buildings are going to have to think through, okay, if we switch to that ratio, what do we project in terms of our numbers we're going to need in terms of classroom space? Will that, you know, will that create challenges that need, that will force adjustments other places? This will give them a year to really think through those things and to have a deliberate plan so that when we make the change, they're ready to go and all of the questions have been addressed, all of the changes that might need to be made at the individual building level have been made.
So as I hear you talk, we'll take our higher level study of the research and our model and our discussions and really go deeply into them to come back to the board with more concrete suggestions.
Yes.
Thank you.
It's going to be unique to each building and each area.
Madam President, I'd like to commend you and all the other faculty because it was, it was rewarding. It was refreshing and it was a learning experience because your insight and your problem-solving skills were clearly collaborative work as well. So it was, it was rewarding and I would, I would want to continue to work with you, so.
Yeah, is co-teaching, was that, is that designed for addressing the high ratio?
Yes. But it has to be done with intention. You just can't throw two people in a room.
And it's at the same grade level?
Sometimes, yes, yeah.
Sometimes?
Yeah, if you think about, if you have two teachers, and obviously serious space considerations because there aren't a lot of classrooms that can fit two classrooms full of kids. But a co-teaching model might allow you to have two adults in the room with a larger group of kids and to do some creative things. And, but as they said, it's going to take some real working together to make it work smoothly and efficiently.
So, Mr., you co-teach, what makes that work for you?
It has worked some years and some years it hasn't, to be honest. It is that relationship that you build with your coworker. It's your personalities. Do your personalities, they clash, do you get along? Do you teach in similar ways or does your teaching highlight their teaching in a way? So I would think, I would feel I would want to be with someone knowledgeable or willing to open up and be learning where I've been and what I know. And then also I want to learn from them. So we're equal partners, we're bringing, it's a marriage, it's what you want out of a marriage. So it's that equal playing ground of I want to learn from them, but I want them to learn from me too.
Thank you.
And you know, I would like to remind us, remember we saw an example at Stony Point North. Small classes, polite kids. It was unnerving. But it was, but their achievement, I'm sure when we, if we were to check, would reflect what, exactly what you're saying. So we, to answer your question, I don't know the population around Stony Point, but they had classes of fifteen, sixteen. It was, it was a different world.
It was.
And then the young lady at Parker said they only had, I thought she said two.
And then the young lady at Parker said they only had, I thought she said 200 kids. They have a small group. So if you, and again, it comes down to the money. How do we make it work? But apparently it shows the smaller the classroom, the more you can get done. Because you can spend more time with them and do more things with them.
And there are numerous studies that show that. And so lowering your pupil-to-teacher ratio is one way of doing that.
And that's why we're so focused on the K through 3 because that's our foundational years. And when we've been looking at our district data and our school data, individually even class data, just looking at MAP or the CAP testing, we see that that, the gap just keeps growing larger and larger by, I can speak to 5th grade. And when you're running a 5th grade classroom with 28 students and the gap is now reading levels G through Y, it's, the balance isn't there anymore. And we'd like to fix those gaps in the younger years and say, hey, Jimmy could have gotten that in 1st grade had we had lower numbers, but his teacher had 30 kids. Jimmy didn't get what he needed, so.
Mr., Ms. Alt, are you willing to continue in this mission?
With Ali down.
Yes.
Dr. Wen and Mrs. Humphries, do you want to continue? Excellent.
One more quick question. You said the model in the preschools are working.
The K through model, yes.
The current model, is that model a certified teacher and one who's not certified?
At early childhood.
At early childhood, is that right?
That's right.
There's one teacher who's certified and one who's not, is that correct?
There are many models for that co-teaching collaborative, two adults to more children.
I'm asking for clarification for the current models in our early childhood.
Why don't we get our early childhood director to come up?
We don't know.
That's not our level of expertise.
Okay, just to, because I think that's a great model, but I just want a clarification. That may help with the teacher shortage because one teacher is certified and one is not. That's there to support the kids.
In our early childhood classrooms, we have different setups, but one of our setups is that we have a teacher and a teacher associate. So that would be a certified teacher and then a teacher associate would be like an assistant teacher who would not have the certification that a teacher has. And then in some of our classrooms, we have collaborative classrooms where we have a general education teacher, a special education teacher, and a para. So those are our two types. We have to have a ratio of 10 to 1, so we never would have more than, we always have to have two teachers and we can't have any more than 10 to 1 in our preschool classrooms.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Thank you.
Thank you all for your passion and thank you for staying late. I know that it's late when you have to get up early and go. We appreciate your work. Thank you. Thank you, Board. All right, we're ready to back up to Item B. And this is the first read of our agreement with McGowan Gordon for the construction manager at risk to design and build the new central kitchen, as submitted by Dr. Mather.
Thank you, Dr. Lane, Board. As Dr. Lane indicated, this is a first read and it's a lot of stuff to read. So I am going to, in a moment, turn it over to Mr. Turner, our attorney from MVP. You can explain these contracts in a little bit more detail perhaps. But I just want to set the stage a little bit. So this is for the central kitchen, specifically in the construction of the central kitchen. We did bid that out separately. I wanted to go through the process. I shared with you the CMAR benefits for having a construction manager at risk, similar to that Jay Dunn. Simply that it's a delivery method, which in fact then makes that construction manager provide and/or deliver a project to us based on a guaranteed maximum price. So that's the, kind of the beauty, if you will, behind a CMAR process. I've shared with you at another board meeting several advantages of the CMAR. The biggest one frankly is a construction manager holds all the risk and it really reduces some of the risk from the school district. They take care of all their subcontractors and that's important. So they're also responsible for all of the scheduling, construction schedules, not in isolation of the owner, of all of us involved in that, but they help manage the schedules for that. They often act as a liaison between the design team, which is typically the architect, and you have a contract in front of you for that, as a first read this evening as well, themselves and the owners, all of us. So they have professional expertise, they being a construction manager in the field of construction. That's why we have to engage with the construction manager. We are building these buildings and/or in this case, the central kitchen. So, we had put together the typical process. We sent out an RFP, RFQ, so Request for Qualifications, a Request for Proposal for the construction manager at risk. We posted that on December 22nd, 2017. When we put that out, we post that on our website. We do an email blast to every vendor that signs up to be on the email blast, so even if they aren't a construction company, they're still getting the RFP and the RFQs when they go out. We also send those all to every Chamber of Commerce. They're also part of the email blast. And also we put it in the Record News, which is the district newspaper, and we also post it in the Two Moss Two, which is a Spanish-language newspaper. So that's kind of how we blast it out there, that we put an RFP and RFQ out to bid. So we did that. We asked folks to respond to us. We got two construction manager companies to respond. One was Jay Dunn, one was McGowan Gordon. Those were the two that responded to the RFP. Some folks tried to respond after the date, larger construction firms, and we did not allow them to submit applications because they missed the deadline. So when we had those two come in, we actually then went through the process of reviewing what they submitted. And what we asked in the Request for Proposal for each of the candidates was to submit a documentation of all of their corporate information in that we were looking at basically their history of their corporation, the philosophy of their corporation, how that aligns to the school system's mission. We were looking at community involvement. We were looking at construction experience. We were not only in education, but in this particular case, related to kitchens. We were looking at all of their labor affiliations. We expect them to submit all of that. Experience in putting together what they call an ROM or a Rough Order of Magnitude, that's estimating for them. We need to make sure that they can do that and have experience. We also asked them to respond to their MW and LBE utilization plan and how they've done historically with other projects and their bonding capacity. So all of that's just in their corporate information. The second part that we look at is just their experience, very specific to the project that we're asking about. So we're looking at experience in central kitchens or kitchen arenas, educational facilities. We're looking at how responsible they are and their capacity. And inclusive of that is an estimation of budget and length of time in which to complete the projects. Then we have them do a section on their project team, who they're going to bring forward as part of the team to work with the school district. And then finally, we do a section on their fees. And they have to outline their fees frankly, based on a complete estimate that we're giving because we don't have a design team in place, in order to give them an actual fee at this point. So they actually give us that information, all in a notebook and they respond to it however they so choose to respond. We then individually, we had a team of folks, four of us, that individually read those notebooks and scored them independently. And so once we actually read the notebooks, score them independently, we determine typically who's going to go on to the next round. The next round is typically interviews. Well, we only have two applicants, so everybody's going on to the next round. We then scheduled the interviews with these candidates on January 18th. So we interviewed, we asked multiple questions. They got to do some presentation. Then we looked at our individual scores again, independently. We came back in February the 27th and we actually then compiled all of our independent scores to come up with the final scoring that I provided for you in your board docs. That was the process in which we go through for both the CM and for the architect. At this point, we now have a tentative contract that we put together for your consideration. This is a first read. I wanted to give you a brief overview of kind of what that process looks like. It's a pretty involved process when we're looking for a construction manager. I have asked, as I said, Rob Turner for McAnatty-Van Cleve &amp; Phillips to come up and give you kind of a high-level overview of what you're looking at because when you're looking at AIA contracts, they're very long, they're very lengthy, and they're very involved. So I'm going to turn that over to our legal, who provides guidance for us. So, Rob, welcome.
Good evening, Board.
Good evening.
As Dr. Mather indicated to you, the bidding process has gone through and so now we have McCowen Gordon that we're working with on these agreements. And she asked me just to give a very broad overview of the documents themselves to orient you as you're looking through them and kind of spotlight certain sections that may be important for you as you take a look through those. So, these are what are referred to oftentimes as AIA documents. It's the American Institute of Architects. They're put together by that organization with attorneys, people in the industry, those similar entities that put them together based on industry standards and practice to create a form agreement for use in projects like this and, quite frankly, many different types of construction projects. And so, McCowen Gordon, after the bidding process, forwarded a contract, proposed contract to us or to Dr. Mather and her team, I should say, and then that was given to us for legal review. So, as Dr. Mather commented on just briefly, there's three of these agreements in front of you. One is a standard form of agreement between the owner and the construction manager. Again, it's an at-risk contract for the construction manager, meaning that through this agreement, they take contractual responsibility for completing the project, including materials and labor within a guaranteed maximum price. That price is tied to the information they provided in their bid and will be added to the agreement at a later date, once it's executed, with an amendment that specifically outlines that amount. The second one is that it's referred to as the AIA or it's titled A201. It's the general conditions for the contract for construction. That document is tied to all the AIA forms in that it has definitions, a number of common terms that allow the agreement for the construction manager, as well as the agreement for the architect, to be read together and to work together because the process and throughout the process, they are working together to put together budgets, proposals, designs, all those things. And so what that does is it provides a common set of terms that control in both documents. The third one, and I think that's, without getting too far ahead, because I think that's actually Item C on your agendas, but that's the AIA B133. That's what the architect for the project. The architects are Williams, Spurgeon, Cool, and Freshnok Architects, or you may see them referred to as WSKF. Their agreement, again, is on an AIA form, so we've also received that from them. We've walked through it with them, exchanged some comments. And again, essentially what's in front of you is the result of that, which is a tentative agreement for your review. The architect's responsibilities go to, under that agreement, design. The comments that we make on that is to make sure that everything stays within the pricing that's set forth by the bid documents. We look at things that are included in the services to make sure there's nothing in the agreement that reads differently or results in costs or risk, quite frankly, that would fall outside of what's expected in this type of a situation. That's the general overview on those documents. I can point out a, just a couple sections of those where things like compensation, timing, those types of things are in those agreements for you, so that when you're looking at them, you kind of know where you are. In the agreement with the construction manager, again, which is McCowen Gordon, Article 2 outlines the pre-construction phase and their responsibilities there. This includes preliminary cost estimates and budgets and this is also where the guaranteed maximum price proposal will be formulated and negotiated out with Dr. Mather and the team here to agree upon that. And then an amendment will be executed to set that. Article 2 also talks about and gets into the construction phase and the construction manager's responsibilities there. Again, they oversee the process and you'll see in there, I think it's around Page 6, it outlines their responsibilities with respect to administration of the contract and the agreement, as well as the construction. Again, as Dr. Mather mentioned, they deal with all the subcontractors, so we make sure the agreement specifies that that's handled in accordance with Kansas law, those types of things. Article 4 addresses compensation, sets forth their fee. That tracks with the bid documents that were submitted. And there's also an attachment to the agreement as an exhibit with some of that information as well. So again, that's where the bid comes into play and they're tied to what they've submitted. Article 6, and I know I'm moving quickly here, so if you have questions, certainly stop me and I'll entertain whatever questions you have. But Article 6 addresses the cost of the work for the construction phase. In this agreement, the guaranteed maximum price is calculated under it based upon the cost of the work plus a fee and then it's set. And that's all triggered upon the budget and information that was provided at the bidding stage. As you move through the agreement, Article 7 addresses payments. There's provisions and suggestions that we've made in there to make sure that the district is not stuck dealing with the subs. That's the responsibility of the construction manager, making sure payments are taken care of, all those types of things. So that's not something that you all have to deal with. Articles 8 and 9 cover insurance and dispute resolution. Again, we make sure that those are all good and that all the proper insurance is in place. That's something that's included in their costs. And so we make sure that the document and the language appropriately reflects the expectation when it's bid out. Article 10 covers termination. This part references in particular, if you look at that article, it doesn't say much on termination and actually references the general conditions, which are the A201 document and the termination provisions and what happens are actually under that section. And then also kind of related to termination, one attachment that we always prepare and include with these is a contractual addendum is what we call it, but it has standard provisions that are required for an entity like a school district when entering into a contract. Things like application of the cash basis law, modifies some of the termination provisions in the event that there's a lack of appropriation or funding, those types of things. Also limits under the Kansas Torque Claims Act, liabilities of the district in accordance with those provisions as well. So that covers that agreement. The general conditions on A201, set up similarly, if you walk through it, you can see where it outlines the rights and responsibilities of each party. It's a little bit more robust and lengthy in that it talks about how the architect, owner, the district, and then also the construction manager will work together in the administration of the contract. The general responsibilities are upfront. Article 3 covers the contractor. As you flip through it, it outlines their supervision procedures on Page 12, labor and materials. And I don't think it's necessary for me to read all of these to you, but again, if you have questions, where a particular section might be or any of those type of questions, I'm happy to entertain those. Article 4 talks about the architect. And then as you flip through it, the termination provisions I was referencing are towards the end in Article... I believe it's, well, there's 12 and 11 and 14. I'll talk about those. One thing that I note as I'm flipping through it, just to add for you all, one thing that we make sure is added as well, given it's a school, we add in some provisions that they have agreed with that it won't interfere with school operations, extra precautions for safety for students, those types of things. And then the last one is the agreement with the architect. And again, I don't want to jump too far ahead on that, so I can come back for that one. That's the general overview of those documents. I know it was quick, but just something to orient you to what they are, what's contained within them. Again, we've worked through these in discussions with the construction manager at this point and gone over them to be presented as a tentative agreement to you.
Madam President, I'd like to know what they, on your score sheet or whatever the documents, what did they say about their MBE or whatever history?
I'm sorry, say that again, Dr. Wen, on the score sheet?
Well, wherever they did the survey, you said that kind of they explained their MBE, WE history. What did they say?
I'll share with you since I have it with me. Yeah, I'm looking at the proposal. I'm just going to have to try to...
Yeah, I'm looking at the proposal. I'm just gonna have to try to, yeah. So in their proposal, they've identified, as far as, there's two pages of information in their proposal, but there was one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine different projects that they referenced in regards to MBE, WBE, and then MW and disadvantaged businesses altogether. They identified goals that were set for them and what was achieved. These are all private businesses, and each one of these were either achieved or exceeded the sale limitation. So they have, one example is Crossroads Academy. They're 15% M, achieved 15%, W 7% was set, and they achieved that. Another example, and I'd be happy to share this with you all, they did have one here, Kansas City, Missouri, the portal hall, where they had tried to reach 13.7% M, and they were at 12.1, so that's one that they did not meet, and 4.4 on W, and they got to 5.2. So there's that, there's a number of different organizations that they shared in their proposal.
Did they build Mark Twain?
I'm sorry?
Did they build a new Mark Twain?
They did.
And what was there?
They built Hazel Grove and McKinley. Mark Twain was another construction company.
What was their performance?
Hazel Grove, total MW and B together, MW and L together was 37.5. McKinley, 30.7 with MW and L together, and I don't have it disaggregated here.
You might recall, Dr. Wen, that when they took out local, those numbers looked a lot different.
Right, because I remember zero.
It was .7 on minority for Hazel Grove. That's from memory, so that may not be exact.
I know, and that's what I remember, zero.
Yeah, and that's just what they put as the total in here, so I didn't have that in front of me. Thank you.
Dr. Mather?
Mm-hmm.
Is, J.E. Dunn is the construction manager, correct?
Uh-huh. For all of the bond projects.
Okay. And can they bid on projects?
They can do self-perform on projects, yes.
What's that mean?
That means that they can bid, each of their respective departments, like masonry or certain scopes of work, they can bid on that. They have to follow the same protocols we shared before in a board meeting, where they submit a sealed bid, and it's closed. It's not the same folks that are working with us. They have different people who do that in their organization, and they do submit bids on the bond projects. We put this out to bid separately.
Okay.
But yes, in most construction manager contracts, if they have the capacity, they usually put self-perform ability to in contracts, and they do have that.
They put it, aren't they our contracts? Aren't the contracts our contracts?
So they're our construction manager, but within their construction manage, within their construction company, there are subdivisions of that company that can perform certain tasks or work. Those folks have a right to estimate and bid on those scopes of work, separate, but they still oversee it. So when you get those bid tabs and we go over all of that, you'll see if, in fact, they chose to bid on a particular scope of work, and if they were awarded that bid or not. Many cases, they have not, and in some cases, they have been awarded.
Hmm. Okay. Yes. Almost seems like conflict of interest.
Sorry?
So it seems like a conflict of interest, but it's not.
Any more questions for this?
It's not, right, correct?
No, they have a legal right, contractually to do that, and it's not.
They have to submit it as a sealed bid, just like any other bid, and it comes from a different department, but it's really a contractual obligation.
Okay. Let me ask you this. Who designs the bids? Don't they design the bids?
They do.
Okay. And then they bid on the projects, too?
They can, yeah.
So in this, in this particular case, this is McGow-Gordon, will they also have that same opportunity?
Did they put self-perform in their contract?
And it's really part and parcel of these construction manager risk contracts, and the reason these construction companies negotiate that in or put that in is that's their insurance policy to keep the contract below a certain dollar amount. So, you know, they've got the risk or exposure, if the contract's for $10 million, I'm making up a number, the way they make sure that that contract comes in under $10 million is they might have to self-perform some work to do that. That's how they do it, or why they do it, at least from a justification standpoint.
This is first read, Ms. Jones.
Okay. Okay, well, let's go on.
Okay, very good. Now we're ready for Item C. Same kind of process for architects, and the firm that's recommended is Williams, Spurgeon, Coon, and Freshnok, or WSFK, and I can see why they go by their initials. WSFK.
Again, this is a first read. I'll have Mr. Turner go over high levels of the AIA contract. Process was exactly the same. Not required to put out to bid for architectural services or professional services. We choose to do that. We received five architectural firms that responded to the RFP. We, again, independently scored those, without anybody knowing what other people's scores were. We moved all five to the interview process, did a full day of interviewing and questions, and they did some presentation. And as Dr. Lane had indicated, and it's indicated on your board item for your first read, is that WSKF was selected as the architect in this particular firm. They're a local architect. I'm not very familiar with them, but they're local here to KCK.
Never heard of them before. Who's guessing? Questions?
Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Turner might want to, is there anything, do you have questions about the contract?
I'm happy to entertain questions about specific provisions, if you have them at this point. Otherwise, I might just point out a couple sections of it, again, that have some of the more pertinent provisions. The Article II, right up front, outlines the architect's responsibilities, and includes the insurance they're supposed to obtain, their role in the process. The, they oversee the administration of the contract between, in this case, it would be with McCown-Gordon, and so they serve as a, in some instances, an arbiter of sorts in order to determine what's done or not done in accordance with the construction manager agreement. So that's part of their services as well. They administer it and they oversee it as we go through the planning phase, and then into the construction phase, they participate in updates and things like that, and you'll see those discussed in part in Article III, beginning with the design phase, and then it shifts to construction phase as you work through that section. The other sections that might be of particular interest, Article IV talks about additional services. That talks about the things they can or cannot include as additional services, and it also helps to outline what's exactly included in their services, in particular, so you don't get in a situation where if there's multiple designs and redraws in order to get the entire project within the budget, that they're not trying to bill additional for those designs and redraws as they become necessary. After that, you get into Article VI, which talks about the cost of their work. Again, that ties back to what they provided with the bid, and those, there's documents from the bid process that actually are attached as exhibits to the agreement. So again, that binds them to the information they provided up front on, in that area of the agreement. Article IX talks about termination or suspension. The provisions are, again, similar to the other two, and again, termination provisions tie back into the general conditions for the agreement, which apply to both this and the agreement with the construction manager. So that's something to keep in mind as you look through them all, that those general conditions apply to both, and it works with both agreements. Article XI addresses the compensation, like I was mentioning. That's on pages 19 and 20. You can see where the amounts that they provided in the bid are laid out in the contract there, and what's included in those. There's some, Article 11.4, it talks about additional services. There's no overage on that, so if they do have to provide additional services, there's no markup. That's something that's in here. Beyond that, then, you get into the exhibits, which, again, we include one of those addendums I mentioned with standard Kansas law provisions, and then the exhibits that they've included that estimates their fees, rates, and those types of things. So if you have any specific provisions about the content, again, I'm happy to address those.
I have a more general question. Do you archive all these other bids?
Do we keep the bids on each of the projects?
Uh-huh.
Yes, we do.
And where are those? Are they in our documents?
Well, no, they're in the purchasing department. So you've got the scores for this particular project for all those that applied.
Just for conversation, who's ACI, who's DLR, BNB?
ACI Bolin is actually another architectural firm. I think they're located in Kansas, Missouri. DLR, that's another architectural firm, and I think they're housed out of...
No, I mean, the name.
That's their name, is DLR, yeah.
That's probably the name of the other people.
Yeah, yeah, same, yeah, no acronym.
Oh, boy.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you both for that review. Board will bring these back to you at the upcoming meeting for your approval. Feel free to call Mr. Turner with any technical questions you have about the contracts.
Absolutely.
Lovely. And if you can't sleep, I recommend you read these.
Read the contracts.
So, Madam, we're ready for...
Right, thank you. We're now ready for the consent agenda. A reminder, items on the consent agenda are routine items that may or may not require the board to discuss. Dr. Lane, has any member called and requested any questions about any item on the consent?
No questions at this time.
Okay, thank you. If a member wishes to remove an item in order for the board to discuss, you may do so at this time.
Madam President, I'd like to remove Item E, like easy.
Item E. Anyone else? Okay, we'll remove Item E. The board, you, okay, for the safe time, but, huh?
I'm sorry?
In order for the safe time during the meeting to be focused on, which require board, please make every effort to call prior to the meeting with questions. I'll now call for the motion to approve the consent agenda.
Minus Item E.
Without Item E.
Well, Ms. President, I would like to remove, if I can get it here, I, wastewater, that?
District surplus.
Yeah. Oh, no, what's?
I is surplus, district surplus.
Yeah, let's see, maybe I'm... Okay, um, yeah, proposal, no, I don't know. I would like to withdraw that, because I'm looking at the...
All right, thank you.
Chemical, we're, yeah, K.
Item K.
So we're removing Item E and Item K. I'll ask for now approval minus those for the consent agenda. Vote.
Didn't hear you.
I'd like, entertain a motion for a vote. The consent agenda minus Item E and K.
Just didn't hear you. Motion that we, what you say?
So moved. Lay it in at Dr. Yager.
Motion's been made, and second, to approve the consent agenda, minus I, E, and K. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any discussion? Hearing none, so ordered. Thank you.
Glad to go back to Item E.
Now, we'll go back to Item E.
Excuse me. Madam President, the reason I asked to remove it, I thought it would give us better insight. It is the vacancies, as of, and I would ask for assistance if I'm interpreting this data correctly, that we asked how many vacancies there were. This report says 31, and I asked for where they were. And the insight I'm gathering is that, or the question I'm asking of HR, how do you, in your, in your, oh, job fairs and career fairs, who am I talking to? Anybody?
Mr. Turner.
Okay.
Let's meet, so one of the two.
Excuse me, are you looking specifically for these guys?
Of course.
I mean, are you successful? How is your?
For example, our Saturday career fair we did, we extended 10 conditional offers. Some of those were for secondary. Those individuals aren't prepared to enter the classroom right now, so they would be...
They are, they are not?
They are not.
Okay.
They're individuals in pursuit of degrees, so they would be graduating usually in May.
Okay.
So that would be what we would be doing at this active time for those offers.
And we all know, just on top of everything else, special ed is a challenge. So what's going on with the other tools, recruitment tools? Are you filling any of these? I mean, it's like they all have subs, right?
I believe that's information that you'd asked for.
Yeah.
So we included that for you as well.
So you're pursuing filling these for next school year?
Um, for currently, and for next school year, yes.
But there's no one out there now, I mean?
We don't have an influx of applicants, clearly, if we have a vacancy for it. Yeah, we don't have an influx of applicants.
Are you advertising vacancies again?
Um, we do those multiple ways. We put them on Twitter. We do those, we tweet out our own links. We've also advertised those on our district homepage. And then our recruiting team also does targeted radio ads. They do targeted print ads. So Cynthia would have a wider scope of exactly what those are, but we do those electronically, both on our website and our social media platforms, as well as print media.
Thank you for your, for your help.
Any other question?
I saw the sign on the door, they're gonna reschedule.
The fellows?
The teaching fellows.
With the weather. It really precluded us from having that event. There was a lot of interest, so we did reach out to all of the individuals who had signed up with a personal phone call to share with them that the event had been canceled unfortunately due to weather, and invited them to a future dated event, but we've got, our recruitment teams are going about 800 directions right now, so we don't have the staff capacity to be able to hold that this week, but I know that Cynthia's team was working on getting that rescheduled, because we had a lot of interest, so.
Because I met some young ladies who went to Central Missouri State, and they're interested, and I sent them the things, and then they canceled, and they want, they want to know, when are they gonna do it again?
Right. Every one of those individuals got a personal phone call to share with them why it was canceled, and to share with them, we'd be reaching out to reschedule that event. So those would certainly be individuals on our list, but maybe you could send us those names, just to make sure, if you've talked to them personally.
And if you, when you reschedule, could you let us know, too? Because I also helped put it on social media where I didn't see it listed.
Absolutely. And do you follow us on Twitter? Work4KCKPS.
It wasn't posted enough for me to follow regularly, so if it's more updated, like weekly or so, I usually follow people who post like twice a week or weekly.
I usually try and do daily, so, but I'll follow you if you follow us.
I'll follow you. I'll follow you. That way I can share and not recreate.
The song, "Miss Everybody Follow Me."
Yeah.
Follow, follow me.
You could break out the song on that one, can't you?
Because if you follow me, then you can share, if you follow us, for Work4KCKPS, then you can just share out to your Twitter community.
And what's your handle?
It's Work and the number four, KCKPS.
That's good, I like it.
We think so. We like it.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Motion's been made, and second. Any questions? Call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposing? Hearing none, so ordered. Thank you. Item K.
Item K, board, is to accept the bid with trade B in the amount of $25,796.23 for chemical waste disposal, as submitted by Mr. Correll and Dr. Mather.
Yes, what kind of chemicals are we talking about?
We are talking about wide...
We are talking about a wide variety of chemicals that have been in high schools for decades.
The type and, and...
From science rooms, basically, the chemicals that were in, the science rooms, we're renovating those in the bond, so we inventoried those, and we're disposing of excess chemicals and empty chemicals jars. So it's, we're just trying to clean that up before we renovate the rooms.
Okay, so we have any idea how much we're talking about?
Yes, sir, there's a, an inventory in the bid documents.
Okay.
And we have Axiom Services come through, working with the science teachers, to inventory all the product, and that's how we built the RFP for the disposal. I'm sorry.
Invitation, invitation for bid.
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
Another album.
It's how we put it out there, to have, to get bids on it.
I see. The inventory's not included in the document that you have, or you, the recommendation.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought it was.
It's in the actual solicitation. Okay.
Mr. Carell, would you give us a general overview of what kinds of chemicals might be in science rooms?
It's a whole variety of things. Some of them have stuff that were left in the past that we no longer want people, we don't want anything toxic anymore, and some of them we found, like, hidden in corners and that, that had been overlooked. We, I don't know how many times over the years we've gone out and helped people try to clean this up, yet every time we go out there, it seems to grow on us. So this was probably, I feel, the best we've done so far of getting all, all the dangerous chemicals out. It used to be you could get just about anything. Have you got?
Yeah, so, there you go. So I'll read it before you get me shaken as I do it. So it's ammonium chlorate, barium carbonate, some of the words that I can't pronounce.
These are chemicals that were in the science labs, so this isn't chemicals that would be in the mechanic shop, or in the paint shop. This is just focusing on chemicals that were in the science labs, and a little bit from some of the art rooms, very little from the art rooms.
Any idea why Sumner Academy has the highest?
I'm sorry?
Sumner Academy has the highest amount, $10,000 compared to $4,000, $2,000.
They might, they might have a little more.
They've also probably done a little bit better job of... I can tell you that over the past, Sumner has, has collected a lot more chemicals as part of their inventory, because of some of the things they do with ID. So as a result, a lot of times, what they've got stored is byproduct after an experiment, and so you don't pour it down the sink, or you don't pour it out on the ground, but people would put it back in a container, and then it would get forgotten. So that's what some, that's what some of the effect is. It's byproduct of things they did in experiment.
So they don't have that in middle school?
No, we try to keep all, as many chemicals as possible out of middle school, all dangerous chemicals. You know, we'll do things like salt, vinegar, and those kind of things.
Making sure, checking our middle school, so there's nothing left behind.
We did go through and look, just to make sure that nothing crept in there.
Oh, good.
It was a thorough analysis, and I think we found most of it, and we're just trying to clean it up, because really, the shelves that they're sitting on will be gone once we get through and remodel them, and then, to get it, just to get it cleaned up. It's...
And inventoried, well.
Inventoried. We have a software program, and part of the program we're developing, there was a program, but we're trying to get it a better system where we don't build up like that. We'll probably end up, at some point, having a contract to, to do a yearly cleanup.
That's what I was asking.
Yeah, we'll head that way. I don't know if it's yearly, twice a year, once every two years, we'll have to see the volume, but this is mainly to get out of the way.
That's what I was going to mention, you know, it'd probably be more cost-effective to, to have an annual contract for disposal.
Correct, right. So this is the first step in a couple-step process to perfect that.
I see.
Right now, we're trying to clear the rooms.
I got you.
So we can build.
Got you. Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Any other questions?
All right. We'll have to take vote for the bid for chemical waste disposal.
I move we accept.
Yeah.
Second.
I second.
Motion being made, and second, to accept the bid.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposing? Hearing none, so ordered. Thank you. We'll go on to payment of bills.
Really quick, I forgot to mention, I found a couple of spelling errors in February 13th meeting that I'll go ahead and give to Susan.
The financial records of the district are public and available on our website. The members of them have had time to review this material ahead of the meeting. Madam Superintendent, have any members made any inquiry of information, and if so, would you share that with the...
No inquiries.
Okay. Entertain a motion for the payment of bills.
I move we pay our bills. Second.
Motion being made, and second, do we pay the bills? Any discussion?
Just a question. Dr. Lane, we don't pay Head Start anymore? We usually have a Head Start.
We must not have had any bills this cycle.
We don't have to divide it out, because we don't have a conflict.
Oh, that's right. Okay, thank you.
Oh.
Thank you for that reminder. So they're embedded in the irregular report?
They didn't say it on the...
There is no more conflict now with Head Start, so Ms. Westfall reminded me that we embedded those in our one payment. So you'll have one report.
Right. Arranged that on the board. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposing? Hearing none, so ordered. Thank you. All right. How long are we talking?
Negotiations.
Let's do 15 minutes, complete, Dr. Mathers.
15 minutes? Okay. I need a motion for the board to recess into executive, to recess into executive session. Let's see, it is eight, let's say eight. Eight forty-five to establish parameters for teaching negotiation pursuant to exception of the employee-employee negotiation under Kansas Open Meeting Act. The board will return at nine o'clock.
I saw move.
Motion been made, and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposing? Hearing none, let's get that. Thank you.